We're good to go. Okay, I'm going to call this September 9th meeting of the Issaquah School Board to order, and we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to thank everyone for their patience. The board was an executive session relating to personnel matters, and our session went over by half an hour, so we're starting a half hour late. And hopefully that was obvious on the Zoom thing, and if not, I do apologize. But it was necessary. The next thing we have... Sorry, my computer's not quite organized. The next thing on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone in the room that wanted to give public input? Okay, so we will go to the Zoom, and I will just remind you to please clearly state your name and school attendance area. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Remember that the board does not respond to public input, so it is input only. The board neither endorses nor censors any opinions expressed in public input. We ask that you keep all comments civil and respectful. And... Yeah, that's it. So do I have public input? I do. See one, Sarah Woody. Okay, can you unmute? Yeah, you're unmuted.
Hi there. Okay, ooh, I've never been first. Thank you. So I'm in my card gymnastics for my kids. So I'm Sarah Woody. I have two kids at Cougar Ridge Elementary. And today I just want to comment on my support of testing in schools. So my request to the Issaquah School District is to please consider regular testing in school. The Department of Health for Washington State says that testing at schools is a crucial way to track and prevent spread of the virus. And DOH has partnered with the Health Commons Project to provide districts with end-to-end testing support, including a testing strategist. So that sounds good. The U.S. Secretary of Health says that school-based COVID testing is part of a layered approach in our schools that will allow us to minimize the spread of COVID-19. So I believe ISD should enroll in the Learn to Return Testing Program. I know that 300 Washington school districts are already currently doing this. I think it's a great idea. Particularly because just today I heard from a parent that I know in the district whose child just tested positive completely asymptomatic, and they only found out because of some external reason not related to school. And this is obvious, it's an example of how this can really spread when you don't even know. And so testing catches those asymptomatic cases, not all of them, but many of them, to reduce the spread, and most importantly, to keep schools open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will just mention, this is actually public input for items not on the agenda. I believe we will be discussing testing later on in the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I looked at the agenda. I didn't see that, so.
No, it's okay. It's not a problem for you. I just wanted to say that in case there were 12 other people. It will be part of the first week of school review conversation.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Was there any other public input? No. Okay. So next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a meeting management tool whereby the board is able to pass multiple items with one motion. The consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board prior to the meeting, and any board member may remove an item from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda for discussion if he so chooses. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move the consent agenda be approved as presented.
You wanted... Oh, that's not your mic. I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got two mics. Sorry, we're distracted. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. We're going to make up all this time. Establishment of the regular agenda. Are there any changes?
There are none.
Okay, perfect. And that brings us, oh, so quickly, to the first week of school review, and I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Great. Thank you, President Weaver. Do you have some things that I'll be sharing, and then I will be asking some of my cabinet staff to also share some updates? And one of those will be related to the Learn to Return program, testing program. So the first week of school review. Well, reopening the entire Issaquah School District to full-time, five-day-a-week schooling has been quite challenging on a number of fronts. I am happy to report that after our first seven days, we have experienced many, many successes, and I have witnessed a tremendous amount of joy and excitement from students and staff alike about being back in school. I want to give a huge thanks to everyone, from all of our support staff and departments to our individual school staffs, for the incredible effort everyone has put into what, given our pandemic circumstances, has been a wonderful start of the new school year. I also want to give thanks to our students and families for their patience, preparedness, and flexibility as we've had to manage through multiple issues as we work to implement the school board's resolution from last spring, calling for five-day, full days of in-person schooling each week. Together, as a school district community, we did it. We got our schools open, and we did it very, very well. Of course, this all comes with a healthy concern regarding COVID and rising rates driven by the Delta variant. Fortunately, at this point, we've not seen a dramatic increase in COVID cases, and subsequently, we've not had to quarantine large numbers of students or close any classrooms. We continue to monitor this very closely, work with public health, and stand ready to address whatever issues come up as a result of the pandemic. I will share that I have observed staff and students doing a wonderful job of implementing COVID mitigation strategies such as wearing face coverings, hand washing or sanitizing, monitoring our own health symptoms, and those of our children maintaining physical distance from one another to the extent possible, even in crowded schools, classrooms, and on school buses. It's been impressive to watch. I truly believe that our mitigation efforts, when combined with our community's very high vaccination rates, have helped us get our schools open to this, to in-person learning, and will hopefully help us keep the schools open so our community can rely on us. I've had a number, I do, as I mentioned, have a number of cabinet members ready to provide updates on everything from COVID testing to food service. But before I ask them to come up and speak, I wanted to share a few of my initial impressions from visiting many of our schools this past week. And it's been really fun to be back out in the schools with students and teachers and support staff and parents. So there are some words that come to mind as I've reflected on the past week. Joyfulness, excitement, wonder, apprehension, nervousness, smiles, laughs, and curiosity. Quite simply, most everyone I saw or spoke with, from students to staff, to parents, were very happy and even somewhat relieved that our amazing ISD schools were once again humming with activity. Again, as superintendent, I can't thank everyone enough for helping us create this critically important opportunity for our students to learn, grow, and experience the incredible Issaquah Public Schools. So we do have a number of things that we did want to update the board and the community on. It has been an exciting seven full days of in-person instruction. And so now I think the first person I want to call up is our deputy superintendent, Dr. Josh Almay, to give us an update on some important conversations we are having with the Learn to Return organization regarding COVID testing. So our public input was quite timely, I think. And then after Josh, I have other cabinet members prepared to give updates on enrollment, transportation, continuity of operations, planning, food service, vaccination requirement procedures, and support for our students receiving special education services. So, Dr. Almay, if you could take it away.
Thank you, Superintendent Thiele. Dr. Josh Almay, Deputy Superintendent. After the last board meeting, two weeks ago, we quickly scheduled a meeting with the Learn to Return folks, who also work very closely with the Department of Health. And this week, they are very busy, by the way. Lots of school districts are meeting with them, but had a meeting with them this week. We have submitted our orders for tests. What does that look like? Well, we, in our long conversation with Assistant Superintendent Hood, who's, may mention a couple of components of this, along with Karen Thies and a few others from our HR department, I met with Rebecca from Learn to Return as well. And in our conversations with her, we learned the types of services that they provide, and we also mapped out what our first step in the testing piece will be, which we have, are in the process of ordering tests, PCR tests, for our vaccine-exempt staff members, and rapid tests for athletes, because remember, for athletics that are in the high category, such as basketball, wrestling, and winter cheer, for those who are non-vaccinated, those students who are non-vaccinated, they need to be tested on a regular basis, so we'll be ordering tests for that. We did that last year as well, too, in our, in our, in our, in our spring seasons. And then also rapid tests at each one of our buildings and sites for our isolation rooms for those who are close contacts and for those who are symptomatic. We learned that those rapid tests that we will be training folks in our buildings to be able to administer those tests, because those rapid tests do need to be administered by one of our staff members, and then also put into a portal as far as the results of those. So those tests take about five to nine days to get into us. So our hope is that we will be in receivership of those tests sometime mid to late next week, and that our hope is that we can have those tests in buildings, in isolation rooms, and ready to move by the week of September 20th. That is the hope right now. And then we've also scheduled a meeting with Learn to Return in the first week of October, as they recommended to us, because we asked the question, we said, you know, we have heard that there have been some school districts that, for example, are pool testing all elementary students and whatnot on a regular basis. They recommended to us that we do not start with that, that we start with this three-pronged approach that we had talked about, and then to circle back and meet with them in a few weeks, once we have this up and running. So we have that scheduled on the books with them as well. So Donna, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, because the HR component around the exempted employees, that was when we have ordered up the PCR test, not the rapid test. So Donna, I don't know if you want to add any details to that.
Yeah, that really seemed like a more viable approach for staff. We wanted to make sure for anybody who does have an approved exemption, and that has not all been decided yet, but that we may put in place some enhanced safety requirements, including testing. So that is something that we're looking at. It will vary depending on a person's role in the system, of course. And we will try to make very nuanced and thoughtful decisions based on an employee's contact with students as well as coworkers and other staff. But I think what's important about the PCR test is that we can get it back in about 12 to 24 hours, some of them. So that's one that we talked a little bit about with the Learn to Return folks, because I like that turnaround time. And we also know that often if you have a rapid antigen test, you still have to have a PCR test to confirm the result. So it felt like with employees, it was going to be most prudent to just start with that, and they seemed to agree that that was probably the best strategy for our employees. So, good news is, they did not seem daunted by the scale that we might need, and really liked the idea of starting small and scaling up if and when necessary. And of course, they warned us, too, there are some testing shortages. So doing huge-scale testing is probably not the way to begin, and they've seen a lot of other districts be more successful with those small numbers and then growing.
Assistant Superintendent Hood, I know you've also been, since you're up there at the dais, at the podium now, you've also, you and your team, and I just got to give a huge shout out to you and your team, have been managing the vaccination mandate.
Yes.
And I know you guys have been working incredibly hard to implement this onerous task that was hoisted upon HR departments across the state. Could you give us an update on kind of where we're at with our employees in the process?
Yeah.
Knowing that the October 18th date is looming, the, we are outside the window of Moderna, and we're soon to be outside of the window of Pfizer, so some deadlines are looming on us.
So we are just about the halfway mark with our in-person exemption meetings. Part of the mandate and the process is that we do an individualized assessment of each exemption request. There is no sort of batch rubber stamping these, so that is definitely prohibited. And we've had really successful and frequent staff meetings, and we're working our way through those. Mandy, Sina, and Karolina deserve a lot of support and applause here, too, because they have been helping me, my three directors, get through all these. We are also seeing tremendous response from our staff in terms of verifying vaccines if they are already fully vaccinated, and we have over 2,000 employees now verified as of today. So that's really positive. In some labor groups, depending on the role that they play in the system, our teachers, for example, are at 82% verified, and we have weeks before the deadline. So it's really, really positive. They're just responding and taking care of business, and we couldn't be more grateful.
Yeah. Thank you, and please give our thanks to the whole team, because I know that that was not on anybody's work plan as we went into the summer. So thank you for that.
No problem. Happy to do it.
Donna, do we have a sense of what percentage of staff overall are requesting exemptions?
It's pretty low. So we employ approximately 3,400, and right now I'd say we have between 60 and 65 on the books, with another 10 that are largely just medical. So we're doing great. It's manageable right now. We are just, hard to predict how many people have not really read the email yet or might be procrastinating a little bit. But folks have been really, really gracious about responding to my, hey, please don't do that. I really need you to submit it today or take action of some kind, right? And they know what those action options are, and they've been really good about that. And checking in on, you know, their spouses, if their spouse works in the district or a colleague, and that's been very good.
Okay, so that's like 2%.
Yes.
Basically. Okay.
Yep.
That, that should give the community a fairly high level of comfort, I would think. Thank you.
No problem.
I should have made it clear, too. The staff is here for any questions from the board as we go along as well.
Do we do questions?
Yeah, it's a preference of the president that she wants us to ask questions by section or to wait till the end? What is the preference on how you want this done?
Okay, why don't we let your staff give their input, and we'll ask for public input, then we'll do the questions? I guess that's our normal protocol.
Okay. All right.
I just broke it. I was just really, really.
Presidential privilege there.
I was just really curious.
And I see Dr. Bailey has gone to the podium to give us an update on special services. I know we've talked a lot about our children who receive special services and kind of the, the work that has to be done as we move forward and are recovering from COVID. And just as I said to Assistant Superintendent Hood, I will say the same about Assistant Superintendent Bailey and her staff. They have just done some incredible work during, really, starting back last spring. They've pretty much had to go right on through the summer in preparation, and were hiring staff right up until just a few days ago. So, Dr. Bailey, if you'd like to share some insights.
Thank you very much. Special Services had planned for a certificated heavy staffing model so we could secure those teachers early, and the ESA staff, the SLPs, the school psychologists, et cetera. We are nearly fully staffed at the CERT level and not so nearly fully staffed at the paraprofessional level. We have lots and lots of paraprofessional positions open. Our finer, our final leadership position was filled this Tuesday with Dr. Luis Sanchez-Nilson, who will be the onsite supervisor at the Holly Street and the ECE coordinator. We continue to hold interviews for open positions and are glad and grateful that we see new people applying for those paraprofessional jobs. All of the special services staff have been informed and trained on the recovery services plan, and some recovery services meetings actually have happened in this first week of school. Principals are beginning to elicit a willing workforce of teachers and other certificated staff and paraprofessional staff who are willing to serve kids before school and after school on recovery services. And although we're really, really tired, we're just so proud of the students and teachers who have come back to school and how excited they are to jump off the school bus with their Spider-Man backpack on. And all the way up to the, the oldest students in the program, the ACT students, who, some of which are returning for a 20, a fourth year when they turn 22 this year. So we're just very excited, and kids are back in school, and I hope you also get to wait behind yellow school buses as they drive around town.
Thank you, Dana. I think next I'm going to ask CFO Cooper to come up and talk about how enrollment is doing. He's got some enrollment data to share, and also to give an update on transportation, which is one of the departments he oversees as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Board. Jake Cooper, Chief Financial Operating Officer. I sent you an advance copy, several different iterations. I know that I have a board that loves numbers and data. So Director Mullings asked in advance for some, a deep dive, I would say, on the secondary schedules, and there's no real easy way to do that, just given how many sections we have and how many resulting class sizes, unlike the elementary that comes out every, every month on the year PT3, you get a breakdown of those elementary class counts. So in advance, we sent you June of 20, and this current year, so you would have a somewhat apples-to-apples. So June of 20, we did not change, of course, after we had it shut in March of 20. We did not re-roster those grade levels. So there's an apples-to-apples comparison on class size. I will say that when the cabinet looked at those, obviously that brought out some conversations about master scheduling and choices the principals make, and we often like to armchair quarterback those decisions afterwards. But, you know, so there's always conversations about that. So I was hoping you got what you needed on the detail on the secondary class size, knowing that there's a lot of reasons why class sizes vary across the system. Maybe Superintendent looks like he wants to add.
Yeah, I just, I know the board also received, I thought that Executive Director McCormick did a really nice job coming fresh out of the high school principalship when she responded to some of the concerns about class size and articulating kind of the decision process that a principal goes through that drives various class sizes. And it is, it's a complex puzzle that they are trying to put together, and you're having to make choices about... And there's a lot that plays into it, everything from the size of the room, but also to the nature of the class. There are some classes that lend themselves to a larger enrollment and some that you absolutely would not want to have a large enrollment in. And so, you know, they, it really is, they're, they're working with an FTE number, and they are trying to carve it up and make the best use of it. But there are decisions that they, they have to make along the way, and I, I just appreciated that from, from Executive Director McCormick. I thought that, it took me back to my days of building a middle school schedule, which is not nearly as complex as a high school schedule, and remembering, oh, yeah, there's all these drivers in the schedule, and if I do this, it pops out over here. So I appreciated that. And I hope that that helps some in the community that had questions have a little better understanding of that as well. Thanks, Jake. I just wanted to share that.
To that end, I think we can be crisper on the language. We talk about class size. We're usually talking about allocation of class size, which is, we have not changed the allocation, but from year to year, if you're at the secondary level, you can have different-sized classes. It is a function, as the cabinet said, of the master schedule or the number of students that want to take that class, quite frankly, and if it's required to graduate, that would be the other major driver. But also you've been updating detail on the elementary resulting ratios at the elementary level. As we discussed last meeting, we did lose a couple hundred kids between preliminary PT3 and the actual, which was last week. I do anticipate those will bounce back, another 100, 100 and a half. So we should be right close to projection. We're at 48 below right now. I imagine we're going to be about 100 above or so on the October count. So there was some folks that were waiting to make that last-minute decision, and we still have people making decisions about the education of children on a daily basis, what fits best for them during the COVID pandemic. So, but the resulting class sizes numerically speak for themselves. And I'll just rattle K5 off just quickly, if that would suit the board. A resulting actual class sizes from based on the last count for kindergarten, average 17 and a half. First grade average 17.8. Second grade 18.9. Third grade 20 and a half. Fourth grade 22.3. Fifth grade 23.1. So you've got a K3 average of 18.7, which, when you are able to count the other teachers supporting students in grades K3, the district will be at full compliance for K3 staffing in that regard. So you'll be getting all your state apportionment for K3 class size funding. Then your fourth and fifth grade, as we talked about, we're 22 and 23. And then we staff 6-8. The resulting staffing at 6-8 is per one FTE, per 25.1 is where it ended up, actually. And then our high schools, one every 25.6 kids generated students. So we better that ratio. We are slightly overstaffed. Is there are fluctuations? But I do anticipate to gain 100, 150 kids between now and October 1. So enrollment, I do have to remind people, usually when we celebrate that enrollment came in on projection, this is the first year I projected downward significantly. So we're down 500. We did meet that projection, but we still have less students than we had the prior year, and that's about 1,500 to 1,600 students over a two-year period.
I think that's the important number for people to wrap their head around, that the system is down from pre-pandemic times, about 1,500 students or the equivalency of Liberty High School.
Liberty, and as a head count, counting the running students.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, just to help people visualize it, that's a significant decline for a district that hadn't really experienced decline in over three decades.
Yes, it was very, it is a very interesting time in our enrollment pattern. So we, again, we, Superintendent and I spend a lot of time injecturing if enrollment is going to bounce back or not, and we've talked about it a lot in this room, that it will have to do with the service delivery model, the pandemic. And there are some things that we will see, maybe have changed our customer base, I'm referring to the students and parents in this case, maybe changed that permanently. We don't know about migration or choices made on homeschooling or online school. That, that could affect our enrollment for quite a while.
Jake is correct. We do have this discussion back and forth. I do believe a fair amount of that enrollment will come back. I also recognize that there's going to be, continue to be some natural growth in our system. Again, I've been driving around the 110 square miles a lot lately. I love doing that, by the way. I'm so happy that I get to do that again. And we still have housing starts in the community. You know, I hadn't been out there as much, and it's, it's interesting. If you don't go to a part of the district that you haven't been in in a few months, it can really change. And there, we're still seeing a lot of the, what we used to refer to it as like fill-in housing, especially up on the Sammamish Plateau, where one house that was built in the 70s goes down and is replaced by four or five houses in that same square patch of land there. So I, I do see some, some future growth as well. I think it's interesting, too, to note that our high school numbers are actually high. I mean, they're, they're actually, you know, and it probably has something to do with the fact that the vaccine has been available to high schoolers since very early on. And so our high school numbers are quite high. And to that end, as we are talking about crowded schools, I do want to remind people, our high schools, particularly Skyline and Issaquah High, have been crowded for decades. And we have a wonderful solution in the works for that. It's called our Fourth Comprehensive High School, to be located on the property of the old Providence Heights area. We just really need to get that, it, it just really drove home to me, spending time at Skyline and at Issaquah High. We need that high school. We've needed that high school for years, and I would just implore anybody who has any say in that, please help us do that, because we, we've needed it for a long time. We need it, and we continue to need that, that high school to be built.
And for the boards at vacation as well, we, we don't get final running start FTE numbers until November. The community colleges do not supply that information to us until mid, late October, first part of November. So then you will see that PT3 sheet change and go to actual running start numbers. That's important to watch, too. We had a, what, an increase of 150 to 200 kiddos in running start. We'll see if that pattern remains, if there's an uptick or just maintenance of that as well. And you also look, and I, I always look at wonderful little Gibson Act. That's also helped relieve crowding, you know. That's also helped relieve crowding, you know. We have a hundred and eighty kids there. Our old school Tiger Mountain usually ran about one hundred and change.
Oh, it was down into the forties.
So remember that, that has been since that school's inception, it has also continued to draw full classes. And you can see that Principal Bamba has a full cohort in her freshman year sitting in sixty, almost seventy kids. So that should carry through all the way to your graduating class, which is a good thing to see at that big picture school. So.
Yeah.
Transportation Superintendent?
Yeah, so we've, obviously Jake, we've received some emails and some concerns about transportation. I know we put messages out reminding the community that we always are balancing routes the first few weeks of the school year. We, we have the added pleasure this year of opening two new schools. We currently, you know, the new Cedar Trails Elementary and Cougar Mountain Middle School, which is currently at Ringdole. But all of that required additional busing. We do have a bit of a labor shortage in that area as well. And so I know that there's been some frustrations and it's no consolation. If you live in the Issaquah School District and you're having crowded buses or whatnot, but I will assure you, based on conversations that I'm having with my colleagues and you can read it in the newspapers, transportation systems are suffering all over the place and some much worse than we are. So kudos to our staff. I think the decision that, that you and the board made last year to help keep our drivers invested in this school district has helped us. I think we would have lost a lot more drivers had we not taken some of the actions we did last year. And I'm just super grateful to all the drivers who are out there. But maybe if you could talk a little bit about kind of where we're at with transportation now.
Then I had a meeting with the President of the Bus Driver Union this afternoon. She wanted me to pass on her gratitude to the board for keeping bus drivers employed and engaged. She and I had a long talk about the fact that, you know, we have drivers. I want the community to know, we have drivers in training now. We have another ten. Now that doesn't sound like a lot, but that's a lot of routes. You know, that's twenty runs a day that will alleviate and spread out the crowd. And we are still rebalancing. Like, you know, Colleen Zidaro, she has been working non-stop answering emails and phone calls. And I know there's frustration out there on the bus, busloads and it was anticipated and just know that we are continuing to rebalance, consolidate, shuffle. We haven't decided to cut service yet. I don't think we're there, but that is an option that other districts have taken and we, we are trying to hold on and continue service the best we can. But they have done a great job. And as we spoke about the rebalancing, in particular after a eighteen-month hiatus of full busing and then new boundaries, it complicates your, your guestimates on how many kids are going to ride. We've also seen an increase in riders, I believe, pick up and just parent take to school, take to and take from, that which is commonplace in the first few weeks of school. And also I think driven by COVID because there is unfortunately, there is different guidance on a school bus than there is in a classroom. Is there anywhere else in our society actually right now, I believe? And we did make sure all the windows were down the first day. I actually have my directors out there putting the windows down. And, you know, we will endeavor to continue to keep the airflow and the masks on. But some of the buses are full and we're going to keep hiring drivers the best we can. So.
We, we should let people know that those windows only go down so far. I know we had a few people say, how come you can't bring the windows further down? They literally don't go further down. That's a safety feature.
They are not made to climb out of.
Yeah.
They're, they're for safety for sure.
And I do want to just give a big shout out to Colleen and her team because that is kind of like doing a high school schedule matrix, doing the routing of the Issaquah School District and the load balancing. It, it really, it's, it's quite a challenge and they've done a really nice job in responding to emails. You know, because I know that their day starts really early and it runs really long. And so I appreciate all those efforts and and I, I do again, have to acknowledge the students too, because what I've observed, and I've, I've literally stood at schools as the buses unload and every kid's coming off with their mask on. And I, I had one story that was just heartwarming. I was literally watching a bus unload at one of our middle schools. And this student got off and right as he got off the bus, mask on, backpack, he turned around and said to the bus driver, thank you for driving us to school today. So really got to, yeah, you know, those drivers, that, that's not the easiest job in the world. So any little appreciation like that. But it was also an example of the kinds of students that we have in the Issaquah School District as well. So that was, that was fun for me to get to observe that.
So, so all in all, success, not a huge amount. I mean, we obviously run late the first little bit as we rebalance. We, I wanted the community to know, we are working with the principals and my transportation team because some of what needs to happen in that first two weeks of school is the the way in which we load kids onto a bus, particularly if you have new administrators or new staff at the building level, that can change. Everybody has a new methodology in COVID. And so we have to work within our code mitigation and how we load the bus. Because that can save minutes as well on the drive time. So I wanted you to know that's kind of the second wave of our fine tuning of our transportation fleet. So.
Yeah, it's, it's a good point. There's, there's other examples in our system where our principals are monitoring and adjusting. Whether it be their lunch procedures or their loading or unloading at the end of and beginning of the day, bus procedures. I had a conversation today with our middle school executive director, Morris, and one of our middle schools has decided to add a third lunch as a way because they were just struggling with two. And I know that there have been tweaks to those systems and that's, that's what we would hope that they do, that they monitor and adjust. And particularly as we're trying to be good at mitigating against COVID as well.
And similarly today, I had the luxury of poking my head into elementary sectional, Director Mendel, let me poke my head in there and I there has been requests for additional paratime due to our alfresco dining, our outside dining for elementary. So we're going to work, besides the unfilled hours, there's also requests for additional supervision during lunchtime because of the enhanced space they have to cover. So we're working on that from a supervision standpoint as well.
Yes, I talked with some of those principals. They told me that you made those promises and I said, well, good, where's he going to get the people? So if I could just make a plug again to community members, if you please consider the Issaquah School District as a, as a potential job opportunity for paraprofessionals. We have open jobs right now.
And on that note, there was positive, I think we, twenty-five bus drivers or so from the postcards. I think we shared that out.
Yeah.
So.
I was a little skeptical, I have to admit, when Assistant Superintendent Hood told me she was going to mail this to every community. I, I received my postcard. And so it, you know, I thought it was a little bit old school, but sometimes old school works.
So I mean, that, that helped us fill a class with, you know, ten to twelve drivers. So we were thankful for that.
Yeah, so.
Superintendent on the transportation.
No, I think you're going to get plenty of opportunities on the next agenda item, Mr. Cooper, but thank you for that. At, at this time, I would like to ask Executive Director Martin Turney to come up and Martin oversees food service. And I know we've had, and you've probably read about the, the problems that not just school systems, but restaurants and everybody are having in that particular arena. And then just briefly, I asked Executive Attorney to also touch on our, our plan that we're doing for, our preparing for continuity of operations plan. So, Mr. Turney.
As you said, definitely working through some difficulties in food service. But I want to say upfront that our food service staff are working tremendously hard and they're doing an enormous job getting this done every day. And they have been for quite some time now during the pandemic. So we really appreciate what they do and what they bring.
They have been a non-stop labor force since the pandemic closure back in March of twenty. Thank you for calling that out, Mr. Turney. And we, I, I observed schools that have one lunch staff member. We've been bringing in HR folks to help. We've done prepackaged meals to help. That's pretty incredible though. And, and one in particular, I was talking with and as a solo person in a lunchroom and her attitude was so positive and so upbeat. We, we've got this, we can do it. And so appreciative of that and of Director Olson and his entire team because, you know. Martin, if you could talk a little bit about some of the food deliveries too, because I know that's been a real problem.
Sure. Some of the, I mean, you may have heard, there've been news stories on this lately. We get our food from US Foods and they collect food from the vendors across the country. And what's happening is we're literally having no shows. Either the, you know, the, the, the big name companies that provide the food can't find drivers. So this is the email I have from yesterday. It's listing the vendors that they didn't get deliveries from, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six. It's just, they didn't arrive, right? They're getting shortages on chicken. Things like this, right? And it, it's just part of the pandemic climate and it's infecting, infecting a lot of supply chains. We also have, as, as you know, we're providing free meals to any student and so is almost every single school district in the United States. So we're all kind of competing in that arena too. That might have something to do with it. This impacts the menus. As you mentioned, the kit or the box lunch, however you want to look at it, we're using that as kind of a, a way to get past some of this because we can provide some basics that a vendor can provide, the, the components. It's scaled down. It's not a hot option, but it does meet the need to, to have those components. And we're trying to use that temporarily to, to get to a place where we have staff. You mentioned kitchens with one person. We're hiring up. So as soon as we get another person in those locations, we go to the normal service model. So we, you know, we are hiring continually. Just today, we had a resignation. So we were just kind of, we just kind of continued to fight the fight and try to get where we can get to a level of, of normalcy. But we're hoping it's temporary. But can multiple areas are lacking with the food, staffing issues. But again, people are doing a tremendous amount of work just to make it happen, you know, and and for this group of people who has a very high bar for what they do and they, they love what they do and they love, you know, providing this to the kids, it's hard sometimes when you can't get that, that high level. So we really appreciate what they're, what they're doing. Yeah, I think that pretty much covers what I was going to say about food service, unless there was a question.
No, no, I, I appreciate that. And I will agree that over the years, I've seen that our food service staff take tremendous pride. You know, in what they are able to do in, in terms of our school lunches. So I know it's, it's bugging them right now that they can't provide the quality and level that they are accustomed to. And I know that our students are accustomed to. Also want to thank the families. I know we sent out a message that said, you know, if possible, if you can send your child with, with a lunch, we want to make sure that we have foodstuffs available for those students in need, who would be our traditional free and reduced lunch students. But as you said, the standard lunch is free to everyone right now. So I, I'm hopeful that, that the supply chains will get going and we'll get the rest of our staffing up. So again, I would remind the community, if you're interested in employment in the Issaquah School District, we are a top ten Forbes Washington State employer. And the only public school district on that list. So come to work for us. You'll have a great time. And I do, one last thing I wanted to say, I've been in a lot of the lunchrooms. We're talking about the problems here, but when you're there in the moment, it, it feels good and fine. I mean, kids are getting food and there is supervision happening and it's a little weird because there's more spacing obviously in the lunchrooms and we are spread out on two stages and into outdoor dining. But it's still a joyful place. If you're in there and you see kids, and I'm talking at all levels, it's a joyful place. Kids like lunch at school. That's when they get to talk to their friends and, you know, so anyway, I just don't want to leave the impression that it's like some gloom and doom because it certainly doesn't feel like that. I don't think that's the feeling that the students are left with. It's just the adults are a little frustrated because we're just not able to do what we really want to. We're not able to deliver what we really want to right now. So thank you for that update, Martin. And if you'd talk a little bit about our continuity of operations planning too.
Sure. So there's a new WAC. It is effect, that was effective August twenty-seventh. That says we need to have a continuity operations plan that hits a few very specific items. I'll briefly read a couple of these. It needs to describe the process for school district to decide how to transition to modalities other than in-person instruction. In the event of emergency or disaster, the roles of school district staff responsible for executing the plan. How to transition to offering each student in-person instruction when the destruction is over. And the schedule for routinely reviewing this, right? So we have in our emergency preparedness work, we have the schools with their emergency operations plans. We have a district level version. This is a continu- continuity operations plan that is really meant for those big disasters. That's how we've always thought of this type of, of deal. And so if we have the big earthquake, we lose a building, we lose multiple buildings. How are we going to go up and running? How are we going to do payroll? How are we going to do some of those essential functions? So now that is a comprehensive document, right? That's something that we want to have a high-quality plan put together. And inside of that, we hit these elements that I just read off. So what we're going to do, De Montavo, our Director of Safety and Security, and I will begin the process of taking the information that we already have, the things that we know we're going to do in these situations and putting it into a, a document that details that in the high-quality format that is required. So.
Appreciate that, those efforts. And clearly the experiences of the last eighteen months has obviously got the state board and all of us thinking about that. I would remind folks, and I know I've talked about this publicly before, but we, we have absolutely spent our, the majority of our energy and focus and planning and time and attention on in-person learning and getting the schools open. I don't want people to think that we buried our head in the sand about the possibility of, of the most obvious would be a COVID outbreak, again, that could impact a school. And what it would mean if we had to transition, close a classroom, close a school. So we have put in place plans for tech distribution. Some of you may have seen some of the surveys that have gone out where we're we're just trying to get a sense of numbers and what we would need to do. We've had similar conversations related to Wi-Fi hotspots in the event that if we were forced back into some kind of a remote teaching and learning situation, we want to make sure that all of our families can stay engaged with this. So there is work happening on that behind the scenes and conversations. There's, was the language in our letter of agreement with IEA about how we could transition back to what we used to call ISD Live in the event of a, of a closure. So I just want the public to know that there is thinking that's going on about that. Of course, we are, we plan for the worst and, and hope for the best. And right now, we're in person and, and we're being successful at that. And that's very encouraging to me. Thank you, Martin. Appreciate it. So that was all I'd had for tonight for updates, of course. And then any questions the board might have or any public input?
Okay, so at this point, if there is any public input in the room or on the Zoom, this would be the time to raise a hand. And I see Marie, oh gosh, hard to read, Marina Sivaya. Marina, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can't see you.
Okay. Not sure about the video function. Is that required?
I guess not. If you can't, you can't. So go ahead.
Just wanted to ask the district to, yeah, I'm not sure what the definition of close contact is or the plan for quarantine. Referring to the Lake Washington School District situation that we saw in the news. I think there was something over eighty kids quarantined. And in speaking to someone with, you know, personal knowledge of that situation, over half of those kids in quarantine were from a single bus where assigned seating was not being used. And I know the quarantine policies, I believe, are district-specific. Those aren't handed down from OSBI. And I'm not sure what Issaquah's policy is. What constitutes a close contact, especially for elementary where kids aren't vaccinated. And I know that you're working on the bus crowding situation, but what can we do in the meantime to minimize close contacts that would require quarantining when not necessary? I don't know about assigned seating and how that is acted out or just what the district's plans are for that. Do we do everything in our power to decrease close contact situations in the ability we have to right now? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Was there any other public input? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to go to the board for questions. And I know you have some. Arlen, do you want to go?
No, I don't want to go first.
Oh. Anne?
Well, we can start with a simple question that we asked our, uh, seats being assigned on buses.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, I'm seeing a, a yes. I will say this, um, because occasionally our, our transportation will get an email from somebody that says something hasn't been occurring on a bus as we said it would. The good news is all of our buses have cameras. We can go back and watch the cameras. Um, so for example, we could look at a bus and say, you'll notice as this bus pulls out, every window is down. Now, is it possible for a student to close a window? Yes. And that does happen occasionally. Um, we've had, well, why are kids are sitting on, on the floor? Well, when the bus pulled out, everybody was in a seat. And then you can see students get up and walk down the aisle and get next to a friend and sit sometimes on the floor. So it isn't, a lot of times, as it is when it exits, it's, it's the way we would want it to be. I will tell you that once that bus is rolling, the driver's primary responsibility is to drive. And it, it's not to spend a lot of time supervising what's going on behind them. Um, and so things do happen back there and sometimes, I'm not saying sometimes there aren't crowded situations where maybe a kid was, you know, is three to the seat, but big kids and didn't fit or something. So there, you know, there's all kinds of circumstances that happen. But the good news is our transportation staff, they take every uh, email or question seriously and they have the ability to look into it. And sometimes they have to make adjustments and changes or talk to a driver. Other times they have to have the driver talk to the students. Um, but is my understanding that seats should be assigned and that's where they should be staying?
That is correct, Superintendent. And then I, I do want to know, Director Zidaro did have to reinforce that with drivers. And we had seating charts set up. And then, you know, just like you say, kids migrate around the bus to different, and so there has been some training and retraining on, you know, adherence to your assigned seat and you know, if you are going to move, then it has to be noted by the driver, which is something they, you said, they're busy driving. Also, for the most part, we've also been trying to, um, and we haven't, I don't recall, I believe we haven't also been honoring bus passes. Those are also can complicate um, COVID nineteen transmission, particularly when that kiddo is not in that feeder pattern potentially. And then musical instruments, we would love to implore kids, if possible, to keep those large instruments from traveling on the school bus because that takes up precious seat room, even though we know they have to be transported back and forth. But large instruments and uh, bus passes have been the topic of the week for transportation along with assigned seating.
Yeah, and I will just add to that because I know we've gotten a number of emails about parents upset about the humongous backpacks. And I understand why we said we weren't going to use lockers because lockers cause kids to congregate and congregating is bad. So now you've got big kids with big backpacks and sometimes musical instruments trying to sit three to a seat. You can see how that's going to end horribly.
Yeah. There's, there are some challenges um, that happen there too. I would note on the um, on the backpack thing too, um, we, most of our buildings, if not all of them at the secondary level, have pushed out a message that says, if you have a need for a back, or for a locker, you can get one. Um, what we're trying to avoid is kids congregating around lockers in between passing periods. But there are some students that we have uh, who have needed a locker, we've been able to assign one. I know for a fact that that was happening at Isguas High School because I helped a young lady get a locker open one day and it felt really good that I could still do that. I'm still kind of a locker expert. So uh, there is, there is an ability to do that. Please reach out to your, to your school if you have, if you have a need for that.
Oh, Marty, I'm sorry.
So I was going to say to, to stay on the topic of the buses. So are we actually sending any additional communications out to parents whose students ride the bus? So now that we've had it a week, we've had, you know, a good chance, like, here are the issues that we are raising. Um, and then to the backpack issue, um, really, I, we did have a public input uh, via email from somebody saying, you know, that the teachers are asking for these things to be coming with them.
Yeah.
Can we talk to staff about really what do students need to come to your class? And um, I, I think that's going to be really important for us to make sure that we are mitigating how much, I, how many items they need. No, does every teacher need their student to bring their binder for that specific class and a binder for every single class every day? So things like that I think are important.
Uh, Jason Morris, exec director of middle schools and Director Morales, to your point. Um, I had that conversation with three principals today and plan on, uh, I talked to my, to other two uh, um, for today, two tomorrow. Um, to finish that conversation, um, one thing at the middle school level um, that we're kind of wrestling with right now is we're uh, implementing our one-to-one uh, uh, computer uh, usage. And I think what we're doing is, as a system, uh, we're experiencing growing pains and we're learning how to leverage more of the technology because the vast majority of our textbooks are available online. And I think it's, it's a matter of kind of working out the bugs, if you will, so that teachers, you know, maybe falling back on old habits and saying, hey, you got to bring that notebook. Well, now that notebook can exist in Canvas. Um, and so I think we're really learning about that. Um, three of my principals today, um, specifically, we're planning um, some PD and some work with their principals, just to kind of work on that exact thing. I think the one-to-one pilot is going to really benefit us in that world. Um, but we're, you know, in the second week, so we're just still um, working that out. Um, and I do even have a couple of middle schools that haven't passed out all of their computers yet. Um, so the computers are going to be coming out um, in the weeks to come. Um, and I think that will alleviate that. I think there's some, uh, just learning how to do business again with that new model. So it's, it's really great feedback. Um, and it really spawned that conversation that, hey, we have some new resources and we got to learn how to use them more efficiently. So a very well uh, uh, intended and well-taken input and I think we're working on it, so. Thank you.
And Director Morales, on the, on the message front, we have been pushing some of those out at the building level. Um, not transportation-wide in particular. Um, we still need to make some policy decisions, quite frankly, on, you know, do we stop bus passes all for how long and if so, for how long? And what can we make some firmer recommendations on large musical instruments, for an example. But when we do have a problem bus, you know, there, there's a lot of bus passes as folks, we've been having the principals message out to families directly, so.
So, so my take would be, I think, for the school year to next bus passes. I think if you want to get dropped off at another place, going over to a friend's house, doing something else, I think the families are going to have to make those arrangements. I, 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 because I think it does make a big complication. It would be like, oh, I'm going to get a pass to go to another class today to me, but that's just my opinion. It's not a board, board direction. Um, I do think so, my question around.
There are childcare, um, that's, that's sometimes it, it's a childcare issue.
But to your point, we still have, I think we have to, we have to churn through the how hard and fast we're going to be on the Nile. But for the, if there's some low-hanging ones, like I'm going to Timmy's for a birthday party, well, okay, well, maybe you don't need to cross multiple buses and feeder patterns to get to uh, the birthday, or the birthday party, so.
So, and then my other one is around the large instruments. So I know several years ago, ISF was making commitments to funding fine arts and a lot of that was purchasing large instruments so that students didn't have to have to um, pay twice. So it was kind of an equity issue. If you played a large instrument, you'd end up having to rent your personal one and one for the school. So I know that there's some of that are, but they have a life cycle. So are we seeing that there's just not enough large instruments for students to have their rentals?
And I'll, and I'll use my, I'll use my words carefully though about large instruments. I mean, I'm not talking about the tuba. I'm talking about things that we usually would transport. What would be a middle-sized instrument, Superintendent?
A violin.
A violin. An oboe, oboe's too big. Um, maybe not. But my, my point is there are instruments, not, not tuba, not bass, that we would normally not transfer, but those ones that we would transport normally, even that with a tight bus is becoming an issue. So you, you're correct. And the school foundation has been awesome and continuing to buy in.
They really have.
To the, um, because we, we have not dedicated, years ago, we used the sale of a land proceeds for a land sale to fund music instruments for about four or five years um, in the early two thousands. And um, that evaporated long ago. And since then, we did get out of the um, small instrument business for the most part, except for some equity purchases in the south end that were spearheaded by the Sunmark and Maywood, and that have kind of moved across the middle schools. But we do have sufficient supply of large instruments, but it is tricky when you have to, want to practice that tuba at home and have one at school.
Yeah, even a guitar case is, is a, is a big case when you're talking about a bus, so.
Um, so this, this part, there's many questions or points in that public input, but I think the big one is really this point about close contact. And what is it? And I, I guess I have, I've heard people say that they believe there's variability across school districts. I maybe don't care so much about that. But I think it would be great to just, let's be clear on what it is and where that guidance comes from, so we can clear that one.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, Doc, oh, here comes uh, executive director Susan Mandell.
Good evening. As the uh, COVID supervisor for the elementary district level, I can explain how we go about the close contact tracing. Um, we follow the guidance from OSPI and the Department of Health for opening schools and um, the, the Department of Health flow chart. So first, we determine the social distancing of the people around the student who, or staff member or whoever, the person who had, is a positive case. So for adults, we look to see if there were adults within six feet of the person who is positive for a cumulative fifteen minutes across the course of twenty-four hours. And if it is students, student to student, we use three feet. Um, three feet within, for fifteen minutes, accum- accumulative across twenty-four hours. Um, and we look at where the person was on campus, whether they go to before and after school care, whether they ride the bus. If they ride the bus, we contact transportation. They immediately send the bus seating chart, which is extremely helpful. We can see that often they sit on the bus with their family members. So their assigned seats are with other people in their homes. So that limits the close contacts that wouldn't already be a close contact. Um, and then we also see who sits across the aisle or the bus seats for elementary schools are quite tall, so that, you know, keeps them um, protected from people in front and behind them. And of course, the windows are down and we try to keep the air circulation going. And so we also look at the classroom, the seating in the classroom, who sits near the student. Um, what, you know, recess, lunch, we have assigned seats in all of these areas. And so far, we've been able to really limit the number of close contacts. Actually, in planning for bringing students back to school, tracing close contacts was one of our number one drivers as to how we set up these systems. Um, so we can see if the student, usually the students are following the directions. They're staying where they're supposed to be, they're wearing their masks. There's been few close contacts associated with most of the positive cases that we've had. Um, occasionally, they sit next to their best friend, they play with that person at recess, they just can't stay away because they're just, you know, so friendly with each other. And so that person might be a close contact. But in general, I feel confident in how we've been able to limit the close contacts from our planning and in following the guidance. And when we have close contacts, we pull out the flow chart and we follow it step by step by step with very little variation and a lot of consultation between me and the buildings and anyone else I need to talk to here.
Thank you. And just to, just to be clear, that exa- all those things you just went through are included in the FAQs that I was reading along as you, as you were talking.
I had a memory.
So I think there's been a bit of a misnomer of, oh, there were some FAQs, but I don't really know what's in them or they're not updated. And I literally watch these all the time and see how they've been updated and adjusted. So I think it's super important um, that people go back and don't assume that there was some static list that was developed before because everything you just said, I followed along with as, as you were reading. So thank you.
And any other changes that occur, we will incorporate those as they're, you know, made, made available to us.
Thank you, Susan. Great job summarizing. One thing I'd like to add to that though, by the way, Dr. Joshua Alme, uh, deputy superintendent, uh, we've gotten to the point with our contact tracing when we hear of positive cases at our sites, whether it's Susan or Melinda, Jason Morse with middle schools, Andrea McCormick at high schools, Martin Turney with either the Transportation Center or May Valley Service Center, where uh, determining uh, the steps that we take with close contacts are not easily spelled out by the flow chart. Every single time that happens, we are on the phone, not just an email, we are on the phone with King County Public Health. We, each of those folks usually has one or two people that are on speed dial that they can get ahold of pretty quickly and we take their guidance in those specific situations. Um, you know, such an unfortunate thing that we read about in the newspaper uh, uh, about the Lake Washington School District. I don't know the intimate details of that piece, but the one thing that I will say is that our seating chart, seating charts that we run in all of our buses, I believe are extremely important and that we'll continue to do that.
Josh, what, while you're there and as the, as the district COVID supervisor, I mean, I know we posted the the numbers at the end of the first week of school. Um, and we had a, we had a full five-day week with staff and a four-day week with students. Unfortunately, our numbers were pretty low and our contact numbers have been relatively low as well. And thank you, uh, Executive Director Morris, for providing him that data. I didn't mean to try to trip you up here or anything, Josh, but I think that's, you know, we post those numbers on our, on our website and I, I think people appreciate that. We had quite a conversation um, at our, our last meeting about how we communicate about cases, in particular with elementary, because there was a change right at the eleventh hour there. So maybe just share some of that, that, you know, and I'm not going to hold you to exact numbers or anything, but how, how are we looking in terms of cases of COVID and all of that right now?
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that briefly from last week and where we are this week, but I'd also like to, to say that we are working with our COVID coordinator team, uh, and our communications department on uh, continuing to, it's a, it's an ever-changing piece of the COVID world that we live in right now. And continuing to update our uh, outward-facing COVID dashboard. Um, uh, because there are, when, when we look at a, a few model districts around us who have dashboards that are a little beefier than ours, we want to make sure that we make ours beefier than theirs. So I, I look for.
Or as beefy.
As beefy, or, or beefier, or beefier. Uh, uh, but uh, and, 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 and so as a sidebar, um, look forward to um, uh, our, our, our next board meeting, which is on a Tuesday for anybody out there in the, in the Zoomosphere who's watching this.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Tuesday board meeting, not a, not a normal Thursday, uh, about an update from me on uh, changes that will be coming to the COVID dashboard. However, to answer your question, last week, five-day work week for staff, four-day school week for kids, uh, eight total positive cases with fifteen close contacts. This week so far, we have twelve positive cases with twenty-three close contacts. Uh, we still have a day to go. Uh, we update our current COVID dashboard every Monday morning. Um, and uh, we also have archived our twenty-twenty-one school year dashboard uh, on another link there on the site. Uh, but we are going to continue to revamp that COVID dashboard and I'll have an update for you in about a week and a half on that piece as well.
Josh, could you also share the difference between a close contact of a secondary vaccinated student versus an elementary student, for example, that, that cannot be vaccinated?
Yes, if we have a vaccinated student, which those are students twelve and over who are vaccinated, uh, if they're a close contact, they don't have to quarantine. Uh, uh, all, all of our elementary students who are close contacts, uh, because they're not vaccinated, do have to quarantine. Obviously, when the vaccine for five to eleven-year-olds comes out, that will change, but that hasn't happened yet. So uh, uh, there, there is not a vaccine that enables elementary school students at this point to not have to quarantine if they're a close contact.
Hey, Josh, I appreciated you saying those numbers, but you said them faster than I could get them. I, I caught what you said for, for last week. What did you say were the numbers for so far this week?
Twelve positive cases, twenty-three in-school close contacts.
Is there any distinction between cases or identification of cases that are transmitted within the schools or just cases where people are coming down with COVID, but they think the connection to how they got it was more related to their home or someplace outside of school? I don't even, I don't know how you collect that information.
Epidemiologically linked cases from the building versus outside.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to have two of my COVID coordinators, Andrea McCormick and Jason Morse, answer that because they are boots on the ground with COVID supervisors in buildings, much more than I am. So I'm going to let them jump in on that one. answer that because they are boots on the ground with COVID supervisors in buildings much more than I am. So I'm gonna let them jump in on that one.
I also know that Executive Director McCormick can talk a little bit about contact tracing as it relates to athletics.
Thank you, Dr. Almey. Jason Morris, Executive Director of Middle Schools. Um, the cases that I've been working on most recently last week, um, and then this week, including today, um, the information I have tells me that those cases are not connected. Um, the cases that I've had, um, in whether it be an adult staff member or a student. Um, now, it's it, the farther away from the schoolhouse that we get, it's harder to say for certain where this virus was connected or or how it was um uh, yeah, passed from person to person. Anecdotally, it seems to me like most of the cases that I'm dealing with at the middle level are cases that occurred outside of the schoolhouse. Um, in in some of the cases I'm working with, um, it has been um, maybe within a family group where um, someone uh in a family group um, uh, got COVID and then family members subsequently got it afterwards. Um, I would say that as a person who receives COVID calls on a daily basis, um, the best thing, um, I shouldn't say the best thing. One very important thing, and I want to thank all of our families, is keeping students home when they're not feeling well. Um, when there are symptoms, being safe now is a very good time to be safe. And that makes a big a big difference as far as when there is a headache or there is maybe some nausea or a symptom, um, it seems to me like our families are doing a very good job being very responsible with that, and I thank them for that because um, that's when I think close contacts can really rise is when we have a student at school who's showing symptoms. If we, if that's not caught immediately, then that student has a chance to move throughout uh the population and thus increase close contacts. So um, the masking, the hand washing, the multiple layers, but also the positive prevention as far as I have a sick family member, I I have symptoms, taking it on the safe side and staying home really helps us limit those close contacts. Um, so I thank our parent community because I it seems like that's happening.
Hello, Andrea McCormick, Executive Director of High School Education. Um, I just wanted to speak for a minute about athletics and contact tracing and add on a little bit to what Executive Director Morse just spoke about. Um, so for athletics, we've actually trained all of our coaches around the contact tracing parameters um, in a request for them to create drills and practices that limit exposure. So many of them are operating now and doing short drills and then separating the students so that their time together within close contact is under fifteen minutes. Um, for all of our athletes, now obviously they can't do that in all of their sports, but they're doing it to the best of their ability. Um, our contact tracing with clubs and athletics includes uh, those kind of same questions that were mentioned from Executive Director Mandell, but we also ask them like, do you carpool together to sports? Um, so are you in a vehicle? Uh, did you do any like before-after-game celebration with any friends, things like that? Um, for any clubs and sport activities to to identify that. Um, and to your question, Director Moore, um, we are finding that the close contacts that we've identified at high school so far are from outside of school, but um, potentially like friend groups that, you know, were on a team together and we went to dinner. Um, or we all drove in a carpool together. Um, so those are kind of um the situations that we have where it's more time together. Uh, and Public Health has asked us very recently, um, just two days ago, I spoke to Public Health to try to identify any of those things in our notes, because one of the things that they noticed as a discrepancy in my reporting was a student who'd actually never been on campus but had five close contacts. She was like, what do you, what do you mean by that? I was like, well, it turns out they had a birthday party the week before school started, but I still had to identify them as close contacts because if they're unvaccinated, they couldn't start the first day of school because they're still under quarantine. So it impacts the way we code them for attendance. So it still needs to go on our report uh to correlate to the student's return date, because we need those students to have a return date. But their entire close contact happened totally in a private situation off campus. So they do want us to, we know about those things to try to note, because again, what they're focused on looking for is exposures at school, um, like in a classroom setting. So um, to the best of our ability, we capture that in the note section of our reporting, and we're reporting that to um, the Department of Health.
Good question. Have lots. Okay, so I'll start with a follow-up on. The first one is, I I heard Susan Mandell talk about the close contact of students three feet in elementary. Like the King County and state guidance is all six feet. So why are we seeing three feet for students in our elementary schools?
Between students, students are exempt from the six-feet um, close contact, only students. It's a very small part in parentheses from the July, the latest guidance from O S P I. I can look it up when I get back to my computer, let you know exactly where it says it, but it's just, it it says that close contacts are six feet, and the only group that is exempt from the six feet is, I think it says, you know, school students, which is three feet.
It's still, is it still six feet at lunch?
And at lunch, it's to maximize social distancing at lunch. And we think maximize, we think as close as six feet as we can get.
So I I guess I would challenge that. So what the guidance says is that if you're three feet apart and you're both masked, then you're excluded from that being considered a close contact. Otherwise, a close contact definition on page ten is six feet, and it's very clear about that. So it's saying that it gives the exception the other way. It says if you're within three feet and you both have masks on, then it's not considered a close contact. So I would strongly encourage us to make sure we're explicitly aligned to this, because we're all in the business of keeping kids in school as much as possible.
Yeah.
Our team does meet regularly to talk about these sorts of things, so we certainly can put that on the agenda.
And and I and I and I also believe that we, at least what I've observed, is that kids are masked. I haven't seen unmasked students, so that's been very encouraging to me. So in that case, that I'm observing masked students.
I agree. That's why this isn't something we put on the agenda to talk about. This is something that should be implemented yesterday.
Yeah.
Like, we we should be following all guidance to a T.
But are you, but when but when you're talking about it and you guys are looking at the close contact, aren't you asking whether the kids have been wearing their masks? So you're taking that into consideration?
Oh, that's one of our, yeah, that's our first question. Yes, are they wearing their masks? And typically, the answer is yes, they're they're always wearing their masks. That's the number one rule to wear your masks.
Right, so you're already putting those together. Are you wearing masks and are you at least the three feet apart? And if they weren't wearing masks, then it would need to be the six feet or a different element of your analysis.
I think if they weren't wearing their mask and they were close to someone who had tested positive, we would say they were a close contact, regardless of whether they were three feet, six feet. I mean, we just would want to be very careful there.
Well, again, I think we should follow the guidance, and the guidance is very clear about if you are not vaccinated, it's six feet. So I I don't think it should be whimsically whimsically like, oh, well, we just want to be safe.
I believe we thought we were, Dr. Galinger, to be clear. I mean, that has been, that that's been the the charge. I I think that maybe we aren't understanding it the same way, but our intent has always been to follow the guidance.
When I handle a case, I don't, I take it very seriously. I don't feel like I'm being whimsical at all, and I feel like we have been following the guidance, and that's how we set our classrooms up at the beginning before school started.
With the three foot of separation, and yeah. Well, and the other and the other issue is we, and we we've had excellent attendance the first seven days of school. We can't deny anybody coming to school um, based on physical distancing as well.
So so I just want to be clear. Are you concerned that we are um, not catching enough students that are close contacts, or we're saying too many students are considered close contacts that shouldn't be?
Based on what was presented by staff, we're not following the guidance by saying that if you're three feet of contact, you're a close contact. The guidance is very clear that you are not a close contact if you're masked.
So I, um, one of the things that we're doing, and then maybe it's a clarifying question as well, but one of the things that we're doing is we're verifying the seating arrangement in the class to to make sure that they were at least three feet apart and masked prior to identifying them or not identifying them as a close contact. So for example, if we know we have a positive case, we might have the teacher submit the the seating chart. We might go up into the room and physically look at where that student was sitting and who was around them. And if anyone, if the desks, you know, they, almost all of them are three feet apart. There's a few, you know, larger classes, as we mentioned about classes before, uh, Japanese three. Uh, so um, we'll do that first. So I guess one of the things I'm trying to understand is what's the difference between where it's called out, where you're pointing out where it says um, three feet with other mitigation, the layered mitigation like masks? How is that different than what we're interpreting it as? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand to be able to thoroughly answer the help answer the question.
Well, I have a question for you. I guess I would recommend you guys just go back and listen to the recording that was heard on what was presented to us by Susan Mandell, that said that we're excluding students who were within three feet of contact. That's what was presented.
Okay, I guess, um, we're, yeah, we're identifying them as whether they are within um, three feet. If they're like, we're we're identifying how far apart any student was from them based on a seating chart or lunch seating or athletic practice or bus. And then we're looking at what mitigation were, strategies were in place when they were within the distance from them. And then any student that is within six feet unmasked without the layered mitigation is a close contact. And then any student that is three feet or more apart with the layered mitigation of masks, ventilation, frequent hand washing, all of that is was would be not a close contact.
Correct. Yes, that is correct. That is not what was.
That's what we do. If I misspoke and that was not acceptable, I apologize.
I heard six feet is close contact for adults and three feet for students is what I heard you say.
If that's incorrect, I I.
Yeah, because it should be three feet without masks.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize for the confusion.
Thank you. For for all the students that you mentioned or the the ones that are in quarantine, are those secondary students or or elementary students?
So is the question, do we have students in quarantine at all levels?
Uh, are they predominantly one or the other? What I'm trying to get at is it is it more of our elementary students and middle school students who are not vaccinated and not have the opportunity vaccinated, or are we seeing more of them are high school students? That's what I'm trying to get a sense of.
We we are seeing more of the students who are being quarantined are in elementary school uh, because uh, uh, the majority of our students who are close identified as close contacts at middle and high school have been vaccinated.
Perfect. And do we know the percentages of out of each of our buildings? Because the guidance was very clear when it was released on August tenth, that it directed school districts to start identifying the staff and student vaccination rate. So I'm confused that we're when when uh Assistant Superintendent Hood mentioned that we're like sixty-eight percent of the way there on on doing the identification. Right, the state was very clear about, we're supposed to go into ways, we being Isqal School District. Right, on page six, it's very explicit, we're supposed to go into ways and we're supposed to identify the students and the staff and what their vaccination status is. So I'm a little confused why we're asking for proof, because we should know and be able to release to the community at Isqal Middle, our staff are ninety-eight percent vaccinated, or our students are X percent vaccinated. So and I'm not saying we have to release that information, but we should know that information already by the time school has started. So I'm a little confused.
When I first reached out to legal counsel on this, I also thought we could use the database. The guidance on that has changed, and we have also not been allowed to just take an adult attestation, for example. So we can't just, if Superintendent Thieley reported to me, Donna, I'm fully vaccinated, I can't accept that I actually have to have a copy of his card. And so initially, I I, like you, thought we could just do that, um, hoped we could do that. And when the legal guidance that we got changed, um, they really wanted staff to be providing it to me in a confidential manner, which we built for that task. Um, and then we have to hold the record in case we're audited, so we are doing that in a secure location. It will remain confidential, but we do have to have one of several acceptable forms. And when the staff are the ones initiating it, giving it to me, then they are giving me permission to have that record. So that's what they've asked us to do.
And did it change for students too?
I have not yet even begun to consider students. Um, what we do typically, we can use the database, but we are typically asking the parent for permission to look them up if they don't have a copy or can't easily access it for us and we need that real-time information. Uh, and we have, of course, Karen Thies, our nursing supervisor, who has access to the database, so we could do that. Um, but we've been advised not to just go in there. The other thing that we found out technically was that we can't run a report by building in the database because it's not one of the state-required vaccines. There are eleven that are, so those we can actually run by building by an entity code. And so there wasn't a simple way to accomplish that until and unless it's made a required vaccine. That surprised me a little bit, but kind of makes sense. So it technically was going to be really difficult to do that way. Does that help?
Yeah, I guess I would, I would love to know why why our legal counsel would disagree with the state guidance. So it makes me concerned about who's making the decisions.
Well, the other H R departments I've consulted with have have landed in that same place. I think it evolved. And I think it was we were, we were doing our best to determine a a way forward before we actually got the written proclamation from the governor. And I think it's when people saw that, read it thoroughly, and multiple uh, H R departments around in the region have consulted with legal, they've come to the same conclusion that we have. So I'm I'm feeling good about where we landed. I think it's a defensible place to be. Um, I do think there would be ease to using the database. I agree with you. That would be lovely, but right now I think it's not the most defensible practice.
Has that been communicated to D O H that we're not following the guidance?
I I haven't done that. I haven't had that conversation with D O H. I think it's worthy of a um apparently, some of our executive directors have.
Andrea McCormick, Executive Director of High School Education, yes. Uh, when Department of Public Health folks have been calling and doing some inquiries and follow-ups in some of our buildings, they've asked us that because there's a column that we report their status or not, and we had quite a few unknown statuses. And so they, um, so they asked about that. So they are aware and they're aware that many districts, as Assistant Superintendent Hood mentioned, um, have that legal guidance. And so they were gonna, they're they're working on trying to figure out a way to to resolve that. So that was a conversation I just had yesterday.
Got it. I appreciate that. Um, my next question is, uh, for lockers, I'm 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 curious, how is the risk of a five-minute passing period at a locker different than a thirty-minute lunchtime where they're all sitting at the same table? Because our middle schools are not have a don't have assigned seats like our elementary schools.
Uh, right, so the question is, I understand it is, uh, how is that different with lockers as far as lunch? Um, I think our uh inclination with lockers was to maintain um movement in the hallways. Um, students are masked when they're in the hallways, which is a good thing. Um, but just to alleviate uh crowding and keep any of that mingling below fifteen minutes. Um, lunchtime obviously um is probably one of the more difficult times during our day uh, because masks are down uh while we're eating. Um, so I think uh our stance uh to start the year was one based on, again, layered mitigations and just trying to keep the traffic in the hallways moving. Um, even though the students are masked and the time is short, um, we just felt like that was an additional safeguard um, until we get through the school year. And when we made that decision, um, we were clear that that was a decision for now and that we would continue to reevaluate that decision um, moving ahead. So that was our, that was our thought process. Um, we also um limited uh locker room usage for P E for our sixth-grade students. Um, primarily to space out or create more space within a smaller locker room. That was kind of a concern uh for us, and so we eliminated that aspect of it um, because of the likelihood, as we started the year, of less vaccinations at the sixth-grade level. So again, it just another layered mitigation piece um that we felt we would start the year with.
Yeah, I get anything for me. It just seems inconsistent with buses have much higher risk and lunches have much higher risk. So the the risk of passing time in a in a in a middle school hallway when they're all masked.
No, it's. Yeah, I I would not disagree with that. I think um, out of an abundance of caution to start the school year, not, I mean, just not having our buildings be completely full. Um, we thought that was just another layered mitigation. Um, I I, to be very clear, the lunchtime space is one of our more challenging spaces. Um, and as you mentioned, the bus space is one of our more challenging spaces. Um, so I, you know, we felt just trying to add one more layer uh, to keep students moving and not congregating in the halls, uh, couldn't hurt. Um, could we, should we, would we go back to lockers um shortly, possibly? Um, I'm also at the middle level uh interested in how our one-to-one pilot impacts uh the need for lockers um, uh, at all at the middle level. I think that's still to be unknown. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, I think the feedback um regarding um kind of our staff getting used to the one-to-one pilot and maybe that binder that they are used to having kids bring to class. And maybe that binder that they are used to having kids bring to class uh, is not necessary any longer. So. Um, learning as we go.
Yeah, thanks.
One more piece on the middle school.
Sure.
You mentioned, um, so there's no seating charts or anything at the middle school lunches? So how do you go back and do any kind of contact tracing at lunch?
Uh, if if we are in a situation where we have to contact trace, um, we can access our our camera footage. We can also speak with the students and identify. Um, and then we have folks supervising. Typically, students sit in a similar area um, as they kind of create that habit, but it's not uncommon. Um, uh, for us last spring, especially um, when we started back to school four days. We utilize our security system as well to confirm. Um, so you know, we can ask the question. But then we can go back and actually watch. Um, and I actually had situations where, you know, I mean, it's hard to remember, you know, was I there for? Five minutes, ten minutes? I mean, you know, we look at the security camera footage and see exactly how long that interaction lasted. Um, in those common areas. And then in the classroom setting uh, where you wouldn't have that advantage. We rely on the teacher and seating charts and things of that nature.
Yeah, so for our elementary lunches, um, why can't we have parent volunteers uh, do the outside part?
I know it's been we've that's a discussion that we've been having. Uh, initially, we were trying to keep volunteers, you know, out of the buildings at at, you know, just keep as many people out as we could. Um, but I know that there is an ongoing conversation happening about. Fully vaccinated. And of course, one of the problems is we have to offer the exemption off option for volunteers as well. So if we put out volunteer requests and somebody wants an exemption. We have to put them through the same process that we put an employee through. So I think that's been a little bit of our hesitancy.
Who who said we who said who said we have to like what legal?
I believe I believe.
Yeah.
All hands on deck.
Let's pass a let's pass a board resolution tonight that like dictates it differently, like and they can challenge us in court.
Unfortunately, uh, it's considered discriminatory practice. Uh, to eliminate the option to volunteer for people who might have a religious exemption, for example. Yes.
I I I don't think that advice has been unique to the Isqwa School District.
Nope. And right now we we really are, we we do want to get there. We want to get to the place where we can process volunteers. We just have to get through staff first. I I think for obvious reasons. So I'm just holding off um, as long as possible.
Except it's the. If we're saying like, well, we need more staff to cover lunches, then we're kind of we're creating our own problem.
Yeah, well, it was the first place we talked about.
So it's like we could pilot with some volunteer people and they're going to be outside. They don't they don't have to come in the building at all.
Right.
Like if we're doing outside supervision, make them walk around. I mean, we already are making students walk around to split up the number of students coming into one entrance. So it just seems like we're creating some of our own. Or we're not solving problems that we could solve and creating more of a problem. I know we're not trying to, but it just seems like we should.
Yeah, and we've actually had uh, offers from PTA volunteers to say they would welcome to come and volunteer and help us. Uh, supervise outdoor lunch. I agree. I think keeping them outside. Um, and we just, again, because of the pro we've we have focused on processing our thirty four hundred staff first before we open that can up any further. I mean, it certainly, and I mean, we're, the good news is that the HR department is making great progress with staff. And and you might recall, I think we shared, we we kind of have a phased in approach for volunteers.
Correct.
We had prioritized such as voice mentors or our docents that were either for the social emotional health students or directly tied to. The curriculum and then, of course, the lunch supervision issue. Of I believe some of my elementary principals would probably welcome the opportunity to do that, but we do have to process those volunteers.
I guess cognitively, it doesn't make sense to me. So you could set it up to where you process the volunteers and you're obviously going to be able to faster process the ones that you say yes to than the ones that you have to create a committee to review. So I it's not like you're saying no.
Hmm.
You're saying. We will, we just have to get to it. So I I guess I don't feel like it's necessarily discriminatory. Because I think there's ways we could get to yes, and I guess I would love to.
I I agree. I am just, we are moving as fast as we can to do staff first.
But it's a I I understand the point, though.
I do too.
Yeah, it's it's certainly something we can go back and revisit and have that conversation about. Because I hear what you're saying, um, we don't necessarily have to say no to a volunteer. We may have to say no until we can process your exemption request. We may ultimately get to no through that process, but we may also get to yes. Um, but we could fast track, if you will, those that are saying, no, I'm fully vaccinated. Check my status. Here I go.
Right. Just because when you hear CFO say we're going to need to have more physicians, those would then be your problem anyway. Not to process because then there'd be more employees.
That's right.
So.
And we're struggling to get them anyway.
Fair point.
Sydney.
Thank you. So um, Dr. Ahmed, I'd love to go back to your testing uh, topic where we started. And just get a bit more specific. So you talked about um, three prongs of testing. I didn't get down all three and I'd love to understand. In this concept of starting, well, one uh, athletics, I believe that was already underway. And so I was a little confused by them getting relinked or maybe it's the same program that provides them. And then the starting small, what does that actually mean?
No, great question. So the three pronged piece was number one. Was the PCR test that would be for our exempted employees. And as HR is going through that process, um, uh, that that would be one group. Another group would be rapid tests uh, that would be in every site, every building. Uh, and every site such as this site in May Valley Service Center and and the Transportation Department. Where if there was a student or staff member uh, that was uh, uh, a close contact. Uh, and needed to get a test, or if they were symptomatic and needed to get a test, we would be able to rapid test them on site. Thing that I learned in our meeting this week with uh.
Learn to return.
Learn to return. We had a core CTE course at Liberty called Learn and Earn, so I always want to call it that, but that's not what it is. Uh, what we learned from the learn to return folks was that if you do a rapid test, for example, in an isolation room and it comes up positive. Uh, you would either A do another rapid test to see if it came up positive, or you would you would refer them to a PCR test. Uh, so so the isolation room rapid testing would be is something that we're ordering up. And then the third piece is with the athletics. Um, and yes, we were, we were uh, doing the athletic piece uh, last spring. Uh, and and we're required to do it uh, this year as well. Um, uh, but we would, we would lump those orders in with our current orders of the other ones as well. Because we would be mainly working with two different uh, manufacturers of those. They give us kind of a bank of manufacturers of different tests, but they recommended just a couple of them. Um, to use just because of how quick they they get returned to school districts and also because of the ease of the. Uh, reporting and the online tool, the PCR tests, when those are sent in from schools, the. Uh, those results are logged in by the company that you go with. The rapid tests. The folks at the school have to enter in the results of those tests. So there's a little bit of difference on that.
So I I I understand the implementation or when you would use the rapid test. It'd be great to understand on the PCR test for exempted employees and then the ones for athletics. Are we talking about a standard weekly rhythm of testing? Is this like, what is the actual program? I know you're talking about securing the the physical test, but I'd like to understand the protocol.
Yep.
And did that all come from learn to return? Or are we doing some sort of localized decision making about how to apply?
Yes, that's a great question. On the uh, on the PCR tests for employees uh, who have a exemption from uh, from the vaccine. Um, and I know that uh, Assistant Superintendent Hood has been working on that piece and met with us in that meeting this week, so I'll let her jump into that.
Yeah, our goal right now is to do it weekly. Um, we asked today for a little advice on maybe which day of the week might be the most uh, effective. Because we know often people are out doing their social lives and things on the weekends and would there be a preferred day of the week? We should be doing that. Uh, I think that our nursing supervisor Karen might actually have a stronger uh, opinion about that than the learn to return folks did. So I plan to ask her a little bit more about that tomorrow. Thankfully, we have about four to five more weeks to really get the system built. So we don't have all the plans laid yet, but yes, there is some local decision making power. We will need to train a couple of us in HR um, who will probably oversee that process. Um, and then we can also make sure that folks are actually complying with the enhanced safety requirements that we've put in place for them.
So I guess so I understand it. So as learn to return that that. Organization or agency.
Hmm.
They are a way to source the physical test.
Yes.
Um, and are they also providing guidance on program implementation or is that solely on the um, district to create?
I think it's a little of both. I think they're giving us large framework information right now. Um, and then if we need more specifics, I'm sure they would answer our questions in the future, but they are leaving us some local control for how to do it. Who to designate to do certain things. Um, we did see, I I found some good news in our conversation with them as well. That there might be future labor support if we needed it, so they may be able to staff some things for us. Um, that's not going to happen right away, I don't think, but certainly is promising to know that's an option for the future.
Great. Oh, yeah, I got one more.
I think that just to add to that, uh. Uh, Director Mullings, uh, we we asked the question. Once we got past what the the first piece that we knew that we really wanted to get their support and their help with, which is those three pronged things that I talked about. But after that, I said, we said, uh, we know that there are some school districts that are doing uh, pooled testing. For elementary schools, for example, where maybe those students are tested, you know, in the entire school once a week. Is this something that you recommend that we go to right now? That 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 we that that we would just start to do that immediately? And their guidance to us was was no to wait on that, which was to implement uh, these three prongs first. And then to have a follow up meeting. Uh, that was not something that they encouraged us to do out of the gate.
Asymptomatic screening has not been shown to be effective.
Yeah.
Like I'll just read the press release from Inslee for the man that vaccine mandate for healthcare workers. Obviously, I'm we're in a much more high risk environment and it was keep staff, families and communities safe. There will be no test out option for employees past opt out testing. So weekly testing is what it's referring to. Policies in congregate facilities for unvaccinated staff have not been efficient. Preventing outbreaks that impact employees, clients and families. Providing a test out option would be both a financial burden for staff and taxpayers and ineffective at protecting the lives of Washingtonians. So my challenge to our staff is given the staff burden on this. And if Inslee has directed healthcare to not do it because of its shown ineffectiveness. To be cautious with how much staff time is taken. To that, meaning if there was limited staff time for our nursing staff. And we could offer a vaccine clinic for our students when it becomes available for five to eleven year olds versus testing. I sure hope we choose the one that's more effective.
Yeah.
Hmm hmm hmm.
Yeah, and I think this would be.
And then that feedback, Dr. Gallagher, is exactly the feedback that they gave us.
Yeah, I think this would be something that would be really important to get out there in the FAQs because we are getting tons of emails. Tons, we're getting a lot um, about why aren't we doing across the board testing of kids? I don't think my kid is safe unless you're testing all the other kids. And if if it's really, and I've heard this, you're not the first person I've heard say that, but you're probably the one with the most credibility. Um, if it's really proven to not be effective, we need to get that out there. No, it's not just that we didn't feel like it. We've been told it's not effective. We're concentrating our resources.
Yeah, yeah, Board President Weaver, I I agree with you wholeheartedly. That was the driver as of us asking that question was the the community feedback that we had been getting. Uh, so in our meeting this week, we did ask that question. Like I said, like I was agreeing with Dr. Gallagher. Uh, that was the response that we got. I know that uh, Executive Director uh, uh, Alicia Ingles is listening right now. We will make sure to get that in the FAQs and to get that broadcast uh, the best way that we can. It's pretty new information just because we just spent this just recently with with learn to return. But we will get that information out to the public as to what we are doing and what we're not doing at this time.
There there were, I will add just to that same point, there were some pilots uh, school districts last year as well. That came back with the same result that the amount of effort that went into the pool testing did not yield. Um, the results that they wanted.
I I would also add, even if we wanted to do that. Right now, the feedback that we got, they didn't think we'd be able to get the tests.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate all the information because I did keep sending emails to you guys asking this question. So I'm glad you brought it to us. Because we do want to understand what are the pros and cons of it and how effective is it? And the challenge is, you know, just anecdotal information isn't really helpful. If it's just a story about a place here or there. So it's really helpful to have them say they've analyzed it, if that's what it is, and it's not effective. Or in the healthcare setting, it was not found to be effective. So we need that kind of standing of information to put out in the FAQs to say why we're not doing it. Or why we're not doing it at this time because it is not the best use of our resource.
Right.
Not effective, but that's what we.
And the testing are and the tests aren't readily available. There's really three reasons right now.
So I appreciate you guys bringing it because I know I kept asking you questions about this because I did want to know about it. So we could put the information out there about whether it is or isn't effective and how best to move forward with our resources.
Yeah, and I want to be clear because there's billions of people who are listening to the podcast right now and I want to I want to reiterate my words. They didn't say that there's no way we couldn't get the tests. They said it would if we wanted to do all of our elementary students and sixth graders once a week, it's highly unlikely that we would be able to get those tests. They didn't say, heck, no, you you won't get them. I just, they said it's highly unlikely and probably not the best use of tests.
So one one last piece on this for me, which is I think in the spirit of the why. Um, I think it's important to talk about one, why was athletics out front? I think there's maybe not clarity on the risk based decision making. On why close contact athletics is where we actually saw more cases in the past from a factual basis. So I think it's important, one, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong there. I think I'm right. But I think it's important to be super clear about why was athletics an important spot to focus to begin with. I think we're, we have some left with the impression that somehow athletics are special, so they got tests. So I'd love to address that.
That's a great point. We'll make sure that we get that in the FAQs and also add to that is a requirement for those sports that we do that. We don't have a choice. We have to.
But I think it's important on the, I think the why is important.
Absolutely.
Super important because there's a higher risk coming from that space. And so. While but people would love to do everything for everyone, risk based decision making is the best way to deal with resource constraint, correct? So I think that's super important that we focus on athletics was last year, athletics was out front this year because of the risk.
And it's not all sports, we should point out. It's just certain sports that are deemed higher.
To be clear, um, WIAA actually started with wrestling last year because it was considered the highest risk of all of the sports, I I think for obvious reasons. And this year.
I would agree as a former wrestler.
They kept that one in this year. So wrestling and then basketball and uh, cheer with stunting is also quite high contact, as you can imagine. So there's the three they've identified. It is still not all sports. Just want to be clear.
Yeah, please.
And as you come up, I wanted to say that please don't link when you bring out the testing program FAQs. Uh, the return to learn links to the Abbott site about sensitivity and specificity for the rapid test. That is not accurate data. So uh, that is.
We'll keep our verbiage, our own verbiage.
So uh, we will tell you from the healthcare setting that is, we would love for tests to be ninety seven percent sensitive and specific. I assure you, that's not the lived experience.
I wanted just to mention one more thing because it's a question that I had. After we did our testing in the spring last year for our. Uh, basketball, wrestling and cheer, because we do have cheer in the fall. And we are required to do the testing for indoor cheer. Uh, which is our winter season and it cheers almost all unless it's raining. Uh, and outdoor practice and participation piece in the fall, they do go inside occasionally if it's raining. Uh, but when they do go inside in the fall for cheer, they do not engage in those activities. Uh, that would make it the high risk piece. So that's why the uh, the testing for cheer will begin in the winter season.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hopelessly behind on the agenda.
It's good stuff.
I well, and I haven't wanted to shut it down because I think this is really, really important conversation.
Yeah, sorry, I have more questions. Is Gibson Eck, are they able to go back into the community and do their twice a week uh, internships?
That's a great question. I know that they were moving in that direction and planning for it and. We actually. I have a cabinet member who has a child at Gibson Eck and I recall her saying she was excited about them starting to do internships, but I don't know the. Exact answer to that.
The answer is yes. Um, a lot of the um, companies that they're working for and are not also allowing them because of that. So they're still doing quite a bit virtually, but there's nothing restricting them from being able to have those in 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 person internship experiences.
As long as the company will take one.
You got it.
Okay, what about ACT?
Uh, oh, is ACT being able to go out and do their.
I'm gonna have to follow up.
Quickly, before you leave, though, for the if if they're not at an internship physically, so if they're doing their internship remotely or whatever, they're. or whatever, they're still on campus than those days, correct?
They are, their schedule is slightly different this year. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, they do go home a little bit earlier. And many of them are accessing their internships remotely from home. Um, so it's a little bit less of the on-campus stuff in the past. But um, it's being coordinated with advisors and stuff, so they're still kind of together in the Zooms. I'll let you pick.
And Dr. Barrett, if you heard the question, but are, are ACT students able to get out and do their community work? That they've always been such a hallmark of the program.
Sure, thank you for the question. ACT students are not yet returned to the community for two reasons. One, there's 50 in the program, and they are not fully staffed as paraprofessionals. And we're not yet ready to take students into the community without feeling really confident that the students are really ready to follow community safety rules. It's close. The other thing that happened is many of the ACT internships have gone by the wayside, and we have to resurface and rebuild those relationships with community, um, uh, community partners. We will start ACT students coming back to this building, which is a favorite, so it is an outing for them, it's community access for them. But it's also a district facility where they can start um the ACT Cafe again, which is a coffee, coffee shop. So it's soon, just not today.
Thank you. And, and what was that number you said again of ACT students?
There's 54.
Fifty-four.
My.
And part of that is the impact of the COVID extra year, and part of it was a bumper crop of seniors coming out of Isco High and Liberty. So it's exciting.
I, I'm thrilled to, to say that, because, you know, we've had that program, it, some years, seven students, 11 students. But uh, I just, I just have a wonderful feeling about that program, and so I'm thrilled that, and I'm, I'm excited that families who didn't get to experience some of the community service uh work outside will get that opportunity this year. Coming back as 22-year-olds. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll have more lovely um community groups and employers out there who want to take an ACT volunteer and, uh, and will reestablish some of those connections that were lost as a result of the.
And as you guys build your testing program internally, I would put them at the high top of your list.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're out in the community, and that may give the community hosts more comfort, knowing you're testing those students weekly.
Yeah.
So those are high-risk contacts being out in our community, so I would encourage them.
That's good input.
Yeah, now my question's our first CFO, Cooper. Uh, so class sizes, we've gotten lots of emails about class sizes, and particularly, so I pulled all the data that you sent us, which was overwhelming. Um, but science classes in our middle schools. So they seem to be really big when I compare them to 2019. So tell me about that.
Any building in particular, Dr. Gallagher, or something, you know?
Um, well, I heard feedback from IMS, I pulled them, and then my lived experience is Pine Lake, and uh, my daughter's class has 37.
Wow.
Well, that would.
That is a big class.
That would be a large class.
Yeah.
Um, two things, I know that I just added FTE to Isco Middle School to help them reduce some class sizes after her P23 count. We've had, um, unfortunately, we have all new or missing, well, we've had uh su- support staff issues in IMS. So um, we've had either people missing doing registrar work, so they had inaccurate FTE for quite a lengthy period of time, which we were working on. Um, I have, I don't know about the Pine Lake one. Some of that may be a master schedule. Um, I also released FTE to Principal Campan Negro before the start of school as well, to help her diffuse some of those larger class sizes. So on that one, I would have to defer to Executive Morris, who actually oversees the master schedule. But the allocations were trued up right before school started, so that would be a function of their master scheduling choices, potentially.
I, I will say two things that, um, even from back in my principal days. Um, science classes often would be larger, um, because there was no category for students who receive special education services in science, so they may be. So what I mean by that is some kids will have an IEP in writing or reading, so they're not going to be in a general ed humanities class. They have a separate class for that. That helps bring the overall class sizes down, but since that category doesn't exist in science, they go, they are included in a regular science class. So you do see that. We used to actually uh provide some enhanced staffing for that very reason at the middle level. Um, and then the other thing is, and it's not true across the board, but in some of our schools, the science classrooms are actually a little bigger and can actually accommodate a few more students, but that's, that's kind of a room-by-room situation. And I don't, I don't, I would have to go by school and see which ones. So historically, science classes have been a little larger, and I don't know.
Yeah, it looks like they were historically, like, like, about like 29 large?
Yeah, not 30, 30, the 37, it sounds really out, out of whack to me for normal. I'd have to look into what's behind that.
Yeah, uh, great question. Um, as CFO Cooper mentioned, um, uh, IMS uh did get some additional funding yesterday and actually uh have been working today and will be working tomorrow um to alleviate that, because uh, science uh class was a high area. As far as the Pine Lake class specific, I will have to reach out to Principal Campan Negro and dive into what drivers resulted in that. 37 does sound um pretty high. Um, science classes.
That's an understatement.
Yeah, uh, science classes, uh, and sometimes our math classes, um, depe- uh, depending on how they break, if you will. Um, so um, when I, you know, like, for example, if there's 45 students that need geometry, well, you have a choice of running a class that's, that's, you know, 45, which is, is, uh, 37's really bad, so 45's unattainable. Or you break that down into, you know, a 22 and a 23, and, and that's not efficient, if you will. We like things uh in the neighborhood of 28 to 30. Those are kind of those natural breaks. So sometimes in a schedule, it does break kind of funny multiple times, and that adds up. But I will investigate the 37, because that's, that's a lot.
Just seems like it's going to be really hard for them to do biology lab with 37.
Yeah, right.
You're looking at the biology class. That's the high school biology class being taught in middle school.
Right.
Which is probably why the split of it, it's 37.
There's probably 37 total.
Very small.
In the whole school.
In the whole school.
As I was, so you either break that into 37 or teens on either side. Um, so what?
And, and to be honest, when you're talking about an advanced class like that, you are often more inclined to let that number go larger than you are, say, a remediate, a class for remediation.
But, and, but that's my point. So I could tolerate that if I saw that the rest are like the live science classes that we've heard multiple emails about were in the high twenties, like they have historically been, but in the context of seeing science classes globally.
Yeah.
And those are supposed to be some of our most hands-on classes. It just seems like we're doing a disservice. And then I wonder, that makes me think back to the spring and all the riffs that happened. We prioritize special education teachers because we knew that they're really hard to recruit and retain. Did we do the same thing for science teachers, which are also in a similarly hard-to-recruit-and-retain approach?
That's, I, I don't believe so.
Uh, certain hard-to-fills, I have to turn it over to CFO Cooper, but I want to say, like, CTE, some of those classes are, are hard to fill. Um, upper-level math and upper-level science.
Yeah, but not biology in middle school.
No, I'd have to ask.
Yeah.
Uh, Assistant to Red Hood, if, what science we did prioritize. But I know we have, we prioritize some of the more traditionally harder-to-fill, physics, chemistry, et cetera. I'm not sure on the biology itself.
Well, and again, this is biology at a middle school.
This is eighth-grade biology we're talking about, which usually has one, maybe two sections.
Mm-hmm.
When you say eighth grade and middle, is it taught differently than our principal biology class?
It is just biology. I caught that when Mr. Cooper said that too. It is just biology. It's, it just is happens to be taught in a middle school.
Okay.
And has eighth graders in it.
Because it's way bigger than, I looked at the skyline sections, and it's way bigger than skyline either this year or historically.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hypothesize that there's some driver in that schedule. And she was confronted with the choice, do I split this class or do I bring it as one? I could be wrong about that. Jason will find out. That would be the most likely scenario that I've seen play out in the past.
Oh, but don't, don't think it's wrong. This isn't about my kid and my kid's class.
Sure.
This is not it. It's really, I'm asking the question, science classes in our middle schools.
In any class of 37, Dr. Gallagher, I would be concerned about. You know, just, it, it has nothing to do with any of you, um, as I walk the halls of our schools. That would seem like a very big class.
And I do want the board to know there's questions. This time of year is often when we will, as a cabinet, a chunk of us look at the master schedules, just how you got those chunks by teacher, because I know it, uh, to Jason or Dawn, whoever's supervising those principals, they often want to see how their master's scheduling, and if they gave them input in the spring, like, you need to prioritize X, Y, and Z. They often do that for evaluative purposes as well. So we, we do it as a matter of practice this time of year, and it, and it is a big chunk of data. But to your point, there's always some anomalies, and we do, we often have to go look and figure out, okay, was there only 37 biology kids at, at eighth grade? Well, so do we need to break them into 18 and 18, maybe? Or could it be a space issue? Do we have that lab space?
And, you know, I mean, I, I know we're starting to get down in the weeds about how we build master schedules again. But um, at the end of the day, um, there, there are other drivers as well. And so, you know, you just never know what is the driver behind any specific number at any given time. Overall, it feels like science classes have, you know, if the data is showing. So, and I can't say exactly what, what might be behind that, but.
Right, and if you see, like, Beaver Lake, which is the nearest middle school, which has biology classes of 17 and 20, you're like, oh.
Yes.
That, so why is it, so what, so why is it different?
37, yeah.
Oh, sorry, 17 and 22, 39. But, so you see, like, it's like the, why are we treating them, why are we doing this, the answer to the same problem differently?
Well, I would say this too, um, uh, Director Gallagher. So let's just say hypothetically, we, we see that and go, oh, we're going to give you more FTE. So you need to offer one more section of biology. Well, you're not going to go out and hire a teacher who teaches one period in one school a day. Most typically, what you're going to do is go to your current staff and say, hey, would, would you be willing to teach on your planning period? Another section. And sometimes teachers are happy to do that, but sometimes you don't have staff that can do that. So I've actually had a situation where I've had high classes and I've had FTE in my building budget, and I just couldn't use it. There's just a lot.
I, I would say that this is an instance where I am hopeful that the decis- that the decisions a district makes is on behalf of the students and not the adults. I, because I've, I've seen that just so much through my time here. I mean, I'm in my 12th year. Is often, we end up having to make decisions that are best for the adults rather than what's best for the students.
Sydney.
So thank, thank you for sending over the class size information. For me, this was a really important part of the topic. Because I think this is one of the areas where language gets in the way of what we're, what we're trying to communicate. Because what we talk about in the class sizes to date has really been about ratio of student to teacher. And that's how we get to the interesting point, whatevers of students. But the lived experience of both the student and their family is the actual number that's sitting in the class with them. And so we end up both being right and both not communicating on both sides of this equation. And so I don't, I just think this is one where, yes, there's probably individual decisions that have to be made. I'm sure there are on what class to keep big and which class can go small. But I think it's a language problem that we have to work on in making sure that we're communicating in a way that someone who's living the experience can consume the information, right? So when you tell me it's, I don't know, what was, 23, 22.5 kids in a class, and so I haven't changed anything, but yet my kid is going to, into a class with 37 students. It feels as though we're, we're, we may be intentionally giving incorrect information. And so I just think we have to figure out how to balance that message, which is, yes, uh, to make any budget work, you have to balance your staffing at an all-up level, and we do that. And that's actually what's written into the guidance we get, so we're doing the right things there. And we understand that that may feel different to you per class by class. So I just think this is a really important point when it gets to kind of credibility and how people hear the message. And we have to be super careful when it gets to those points, that we're not staying in the wonky, um, you know, ed speak about things about FTE when, when it's, you know, it's my kid at hand. So, so for me, this is super helpful, but my hope in asking for the data was just to sort of highlight, hey, this feels different to people. And so we, we had to communicate in a way that's different. And, and I think to your point, we have to make some consistent decisions of where we, where we cut and why. And if we can't, right, one middle school has two labs and the other one doesn't, then be clear, be clear about that.
And I, I think the, the important thing is, we are following the same rules in creating the classes in 2021 that we followed in 2019. Having said that, it does not preclude Harlan's kid being in a class of 37 biology students, which really does seem huge. Um, and there, there are reasons for individual peaks and valleys. Um, but we're not, we're not doing it differently, but results may vary.
And it is one of those things where averages can be, to, to Sydney, to your point, we can give averages, and they do look pretty similar, but then, as you said, when you break it down to the individual class and student experience, it can be very different, clearly, between two middle schools. Here's an example that are only a mile apart.
Yeah, and I, I think that in general, our elementary, I would say, looks very similar than it did two years ago. But live science in particular seems to be the course that across our middle school, across the district, seems to be very high this year. Like, on the order of, if you say an extra three kids per class, you're talking certainly another section. So that would just be the feedback for, to Sydney's point. We also need to be honest about where we missed. And I feel like that's something that as a district and as a board, we could be better at. And it's not saying, oh, we failed, just the same thing we say, like, we knew there's going to be positive COVID tests, but say, like, here's all the things that we worked for. Here's what we did. Here's where we see rooms for improvement. And I think that's important for us to be able to say, because I would build on what she said. And our counseling numbers, sure, by ratios, but by lived experience, are, from both the family perspective and the, the staff perspective, at the high school level, they feel very overwhelmed and overwhelming. And a year to, when they've not been in a building for a year and a half to come back in, I get why having a caseload of 400-plus students is a lot. So I, 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 I know, I know you have a tough job, and I'm not.
Oh, no. I think what's important is that there is, it's all about language, and we allocated, I guess, we, I could have been, we allocated resources identically. So if I, based on the number of students in your building, what a principal does based on the academic needs of the students, and I know on Marnie, unfortunately, it can be what staff you have on in the district at the time. Now, that's something that drives you crazy sometimes, but you may not have that teacher that's teaching a certain elective that's unpopular. And sometimes, and even talking to Jason and secondary folks, it's the number of electives too. So if you want to, if you want to tighten up, or make class sizes more similar, then you often lessen opportunity. And so there, there, that principle is going through all of that in their head. Do I lessen opportunity? When am I having orchestra? Oh, there's those 37 biology kids, but they're the only 37 in the school. Do I want to, do I want to use that FTE? Or do I want to run a remediation science course, and I'd say hypothetically, at a smaller level? And those are the things that they do that, quite honestly, I don't get into unless there's, it, it's broadened up to my attention, because, you know, you see how many sections there are. Um, but that's when we, you know, we allocate the same, but those decisions on the ground level are made differently by different professionals, given the circumstances in the building, which can lead to anomalies, unfortunately.
My final question then is bus drivers. So how many more routes would we run if you had the staff that you wanted to have? So in an ideal world, because I really want to know, what I don't, what I haven't heard from the district, is what is the true gap? Right? So when, when I heard you say at the beginning, like, last two weeks ago, I was like, oh, we're running 18 routes less. But what I really want to know is, in an ideal world, how many routes would you run?
Good question.
30. I'd like enough bus drivers for more substitutes, take back or out of district which you're contracting out, and have enough drivers to lessen the load. So Colleen and I figured that 30 would be the.
30 drivers?
Yes.
30 drivers or 30 bus routes?
30 drivers.
So he's asking how many more bus routes?
Yeah, but that's, that's what he answered, he just answered 30 routes.
30 drivers. Could do two runs a day, sometimes three, but I mean, that's the reality. We have, we contracted out of district. Special education, but has its pros and cons. They are reliable, but then they're not our drivers. Um, we've used some of those companies for years. We know that I'm having management staff drive and my routers and everybody else, so we know there's at least 10 there. Then we have hardly any substitutes, so last count, 30 would be about right. We have 10 to 12 in class, so we need 20 more.
And do you have funding for that? Do you have funding for 30 more?
We are not, our system, that's a great question, Director Maraldo, and everybody should know. While the state has done better at funding transportation, our transportation is not fully funded. Um, Mr. Cooper and I were just talking about this the other day, so us, so we're not currently fully funded. If we were to staff up all the way, I don't know what the estimate is, Jake, of what we have to backfill with local dollars, levy dollars.
Well, it's a 20, 80-20 split currently, 20% district, 80% state. Um, we were looking at, what, 12 million, so 2.4-ish um on the local side.
To be able to operate the system we're talking about costs us.
And, and I was telling this, and, and Colleen did, you know, there are things that we have done to, when we change bell times, I had the need for another, what? 10, 15 drivers, I think, at that point in time. So we have made decisions to.
Because we tightened up the turnaround, we.
We went to two tiers versus three, so we, we have made decisions to.
At the time.
Um, yeah. To enhance, well, increase our need of drivers is all it did, I mean, but.
Yeah, and, and so I'm not faulting you. And I think the work is, is good, but I think we can lead with, so our, some of the reasons why our bus routes are the way they are is because we would, in ideal world, offer thirty more bus routes. And I think the community would appreciate that as an answer much more than my kid sitting three to a bus and they have a band instrument and their backpack because they don't have lockers. And, and that's essentially the message that this is a good thing.
Yeah.
No, and to the community's credit, an awful lot of those angry transportation emails start with, look, I know you don't have enough drivers. So they do have some understanding.
Oh, yeah, I want to say the community has been, for the most part, their input on transportation has been, I even read one on Friday, I'm like, I can go home this weekend. That was a nice email from community member, even though they wanted, they wanted more, they were like, but then have a great weekend. So it's, for the most part, the input's been pretty good. But thirty more drivers will put us in a good place. We'd have substitute coverage, we could take back our out of district that are contracted, and we'd have enough to add runs.
I just, my question was, if we had thirty, you know, thirty more community members that heard that and said, well, I'm not doing anything during the day, that'd be a nice job, we could afford that.
I guess the question is, what did you budget for? Did you budget for a full transportation system which included those thirty drivers? Or is this just total pie in the sky, wishful thinking that we had the resources to add these thirty drivers?
So how I budget transportation is annually, I examine their daily hours. Your, your drivers are serving the system. And then I talked to Colleen about what made me be added or reduced. And then I'll add those daily hours. So I did, I believe the budget that you just adopted has pretty close to that. It probably has twenty drivers, I would say, because we knew we were contracting out the out of district. So there's twenty in the budget. Remember, our revenue on that is based on ridership, which is also kind of an influx, given some concerns about overcrowding and COVID. And, you know, it's the first few weeks of schools, we talked about. So, and the state does do a better job of funding transportation than they ever historically have. But it is starting to slip now as our costs are outpacing their state funding models, which we've talked about many times at this board table.
So what I think I heard, Director Maraldo, was, yeah, I budgeted for about twenty more, maybe not thirty more, but we would gain month revenue back if we were able to end out of district contracts. So we would be able to fund that system. I don't think, I mean, I hate to say this, I don't think we honestly believed we could go and get thirty more drivers necessarily.
And we still are losing some drivers to normal attrition, medical leave, I mean, things that would normally happen. And we still, as Assistant Superintendent Hood talked about, we don't, we don't know yet how many we may lose post vaccine mandate.
Yeah, we don't know the full impact of that yet. We do too.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, are we ready to move to the next item?
Sorry.
One more.
No, no, I'm saying, sorry.
Oh, no, no, I think it was important.
This is what the, I, I will just say, I believe this is what the community wanted to hear.
I think so.
So I'm glad that we, thank you for giving us this time on the agenda and set this up. I appreciate my staff all being prepared and ready to be in the hot seat a little bit. I hope you can see that there's a lot of good planning. And to Dr. Gallinger's point earlier, we don't always get it right. You know, we, we do our best and then we're not afraid to monitor and adjust, which is why FTE has been pushed out to buildings as recently, it sounds like as yesterday. We are still trying to hire drivers and we are making adjustments on the ground out there as well. So, but, you know, this is a good conversation. I think this is what people wanted to hear.
Okay, so thank you very much to staff and everyone for that and for answering all of our questions. This was originally a light agenda, but we're going to drive it into the wee hours anyway. And next on our agenda is a discussion of possible 2020 levies. So I'm going to let you pick us off on that one.
Well, I know that, first of all, I want to just start this discussion by acknowledging a couple of audience members we have here, Dawn and Alicia, who have been our V I S co-chairs for several campaigns. And they are here tonight, sticking it out in the boardroom with us to hear what we all have to say about the possible 2022 levies. And so thank you for this opportunity. I'd ask for this to be on the agenda because I just, I think it's important for us to start having this conversation. I will remind folks that our last levy passed about one month before the shutdown for COVID back in February of twenty. You'll recall that in eighteen, we made the decision not to run a four-year levy. So we ran a two-year levy in eighteen, right after the McCleary decision, which was the closest levy that I had ever experienced in my time here with just under a fifty-three percent yes vote. It passed, fortunately, thank you, community. We did a lot of good work in the two years between 2018 and 2020 to realize the, and implement a lot of good programming that came out of McCleary and out of that past 2018 levy. And then we ran again in 2020, February of 2020, and we passed it over sixty-three percent. So we made up a lot of ground there and that felt really good. And then COVID came, and I'll be honest, I have no way of predicting going forward. It is just, well, none of us have ever, who's alive today, has ever lived through anything like this. So it's really hard. But I will point out that levies, even in the post-McClery area, era, still make up a significant percentage of our operating dollars. We talked about a lot of things here in this last conversation. And each time one came up, I almost wanted to say, oh, levy funded or partially levy funded. And we talked about athletics, we talked about bus transportation. And so our, our levies are, will, are set to expire. And so it, in our normal cadence of doing work, had we not had a pandemic, I suspect we probably would have, I would have asked to bring together a levy development committee last spring with the idea that we would try to finalize a package right around this time. And there would be some early preliminary work. And then things get real quiet as we move into the holiday season. And then after we come back in January, we go hard until the February election. But we had some earlier discussions, even dating back to last spring. And with all the uncertainty of COVID and remote learning and in-person learning, it, it just, it didn't, we wouldn't have had the bandwidth to do a levy committee anyway. Remember, we had to do a boundary committee last year as well. So we, when we rebounded from Cougar Mountain Middle School and Cedar Trails Elementary. So we have not done that. And so I start to get a little nervous about, okay, what is the cadence? We discussed just preliminarily, I know we had some discussion about the possibility of an April election as opposed to a February election. Just to, as a reminder, the election dates that are eligible, that we are eligible for this year are February eighth of twenty-two. This is all twenty-two I'm talking about. April twenty-sixth of twenty-two, August second of twenty-two, November eighth of twenty-two. So though, you have four chances a year. And you have to file for those elections. So for example, if we were going to do an April levy election, we would have to file by February twenty-fifth. If we were going to do an August, we'd have to file by May thirteenth. There is, you know, obviously, that trying to understand where our community is, is challenging right now. I know earlier today, I asked Executive Director Ingles to send out, share a document with you about some of our preliminary thinking that we would, we have done in the past and we assume we would do again, where we may enlist the services of a company like Strategy 360 to do some polling, to try to get sense of maybe where the community is on, on the issues of levies and in the school system. But the concern that I have, of course, is if a levy, if either you fail a levy or you don't do a levy, then that, then the old one expires. I believe in December thirty-first. So when would our last collection off of the current levy be?
November, October, November collection, the October collection.
Of twenty.
Twenty-two, twenty-two. So you'd have half of, half a collection in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
So obviously, losing a levy collection, and again, you can lose a levy collection because you fail levies, or maybe you run them a second time and you fail. Or you could lose the collection because you choose not to run a levy, and that would take a significant amount of resources out of our system. And so while I have a lot of concern, given the experience that we've all had over the last eighteen months and what we've experienced here in board meetings and just knowing that COVID has created a lot of division in our community. And, you know, I have, I have concerns about it. But I also know that there's a lot of work that goes into the way we've done it historically. We do bring a very large community committee together with representation from all of the schools in the, in the entire district. And we do a lot of front-end work. And some of that front-end work, I should tell you, I've already, staff are already doing because it is part of our just natural rhythm as well to bring information together so that we can create a springboard proposal for the committee to then pick apart. Typically, they make changes, modifications before we can land on a package that the committee can recommend to me. Then I review the package and I would in turn recommend it to the school board. And then ultimately, it's up to the school board to decide if you want to run a levy or, and pick a, a date that you would want to run it on. So we're just, you know, I will say, one example is we do have staff in the tech department. Given a lot of conversation that we've had over the past year when we were forced into remote learning related to one-to-one. And one-to-one was a big topic at our last levy. And this was, I'll clarify, this is on the capital levy, not the EPNO. Yeah, there's an educational programs levy and EPNO levy. Educational programs and operations, we used to call that the M and O levy. And, and that is, a lot of operational enhancements are in that levy. And then there's a capital levy. Some people refer to it as the tech levy because the bulk of what's in there is typically tech expenditures. But I would remind folks that there's also other capital expenditures. We put money in there for, so again, here's an example of the work that's already kind of starting to begin. Our, our capital projects and maintenance crews go out and they do a, a review of every facility. They talk to the principals. And for example, they'll go, oh, the freezer here in this kitchen is seventeen years old. The normal lifespan of these things is twenty years. We probably should budget for a new freezer for this school. And so we just kind of go building by building, playground by playground, facility by facility. Is this one going to need a roof? Is it going to need painting, whatever it's going to need? And then that comes with a recommendation for that. The tech department is working up a recommendation. And I don't know what their recommendation will be. But again, given all the discussion about one-to-one and everything last year, I know they're giving that another really hard look. As we did, actually, four years ago was when we did that. We toured other school districts and we did a lot of investigation into one-to-one. And so they'll be coming forward, because they'll bring all these various departments will bring that information together. And then we take a look at it as we try to develop the springboard for the levy committee. So there's a lot of work and I'm just trying to get a sense. And I'm sure you might have questions. I know I had questions, Mr. Cooper, like I started with, well, if we don't run a levy or we don't pass a levy, when does our current levy expire? How much money would that mean we would not have in the system? And, you know, questions like that and kind of what the timeline would be. So that's why I asked for this conversation, because really, I need to hear from the board about what your thinking is. And then any questions you might have for us from a budgetary standpoint or a timing standpoint as well. I don't know, did I miss anything there, Jake, or?
No, I don't, I don't think so. Super, before he's just a hard copy of some levy conversation starters. So, you know, there, there's the schedule of the elections kind of ground us since we kind of went through that. It's a sixty-day, just so you know, sixty days prior, which Superintendent talked about, prior to the election date, you must value, it's been forty-five, so they added another fifteen days on. Remember, you're also required to get approval from OSPI on your enhancements, which is another part that's not before you today. And Superintendent noted our two-year M and O, our EPNO expires December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. That's a technical legal conclusion of that levy. And then as well as the critical repairs slash tech levy. And then last round, we also ran a one-year transportation levy for the purchase of school buses, which is a single-year measure that's usually, I have to top my head between nine and ten cents. And the other thing that I am trying to get a grasp of for your benefit is what assessed valuation is going to do this cycle.
Right.
You saw on that, there's a chart, a few pages in there, it shows that, you know, last year, we had pretty anemic assessed valuation growth, even though people's home values, as they're on the sales, on the, on the sales side were growing. But, you know, the assessor is a, that is a political elected official and they often will use different methodologies during pandemics or economic downturns, et cetera. We saw that during the global financial crisis as well. So once we get a closer idea on that assessed valuation, the levy then, of course, is a function of rate and amount and how much you would like to raise or go to your voters for. So I do believe there are demand, there is demand on the maintenance side and the capital side. There's also the demand of one-to-one as well for on the computing side. But remember, all of our tech, tech staff are currently funding the tech levy. So from my director all the way down to the tech specialists at the building level. So if you were to choose not to run a technology levy, then those, those staff would have to be funded elsewhere. But for, for now, those are, those are a hundred percent funded out of the technology levy.
I think Jake makes a good point too about the evaluate, the assessed valuation question there, because that can go a long way towards determining whether or not you're going to have to have a tax increase, a rate increase or not. And it is, you know, you, the assumption here would be, given the dramatic rise in home prices within our district over this time period, we would assume that the assessor would, that would be reflected. But we don't, we don't know that that's what they'll do. They've, they didn't quite do it last year to the extent that probably would have been called for. But I also understand, given the tentative nature of the economy and everything, that we're probably reluctant to do that, so.
And why I point that out is I want the community to know that when a school district sets its tax rates and its amounts, we basically do it blind on a guess. We do not have final assessed valuation. So that's why everything you see on our rates are estimated. So we don't get final AV amounts, assessed valuation amounts until February of that year. We get some preliminary if we're lucky here in a couple of months. But even that can swing by several, several hundreds of millions, or I've seen it swing a billion and a half before, based on what hits the tax roll. So, but we should get an idea if it's on the upswing. One thing I do, I know it's kind of odd, I will ask my, my colleagues that live in district to ask them what their property values went up by as a percentage. Not, not to be nosy, but you do get a smattering of, mine went up ten, mine went up twelve. So you get, that's a kind of a crude example that I use to, to get, see, you know, the canary in the coal mine. Because there is some, you know, everybody has, there is some methodology based on neighborhoods and their blocks. But they often don't refresh that data on aggregate basis for quite a while. So that's the other wildcard. And then along with the House Bill fourteen seventy-six, which had temporary lift in levy authority only as if students. Remember, the, the so-called ghost students as, certain legislators recalled to them, as we had ghost money before. But that also would be in play potentially on your levy authority in twenty-three, if that was either extended or eliminated. It's like, it was only one year now, but it would have to be extended. So there's a lot there, I know.
And I know Jake provided the page too on kind of what the levy enhances right now too in our system.
And that was a slide, slide grab of our last levy PowerPoint. I haven't updated for current, this has been a few years, but enough to give you a idea of what's forty-six or forty-seven million on that page or something of what enhancements. Remember, they are required to be enhancements, they cannot be a basic education. And our accounting system is set up that way now to be able to track those separately. So really, from my office in the superintendent, it's just about timing.
It is about timing and when we would begin that work.
What was the filing date for February, for a February ballot?
December tenth. December tenth. No, it's I I'm reading it right off of I have this fresh off the from one of the law offices.
I I am sensing a desire to give public input from someone in the room.
Hi, Alicia Bevart, Skyline Attendance Area. And I just wanted to say that I am now one, I am one of those community members that has now graduated into not having a student in the district. So finally representing that part of the community. I wanted to comment when you were talking about, Mr. Thiele was talking about levy, levy, levy paid for. It's like, I'm always really excited when I see that as a community member, when I see something that comes through an e-news or some graphic and I see levy approved or you know, sponsored by the levy or be possible because of the levy. Or the new schools that we have because of the bonds, thank goodness. And so I'm always really excited about that. And this is the first year that I won't be like at a curriculum night, so I won't get to see like those videos. But when the communications from the district comes out with all of those, anytime I see those, I just, as somebody who's sat on those levy and bond committees and been involved in it as that part of a community member. I just love being able to see, it's like, okay, you know, we voted for this and this is what we're getting because of that. I also wanted to comment on the fact that when in the spring, there was all of those the conversations about the cuts and rifts or anything like that, that there was a lot of, you know, obviously there was a lot of rumblings in the community, but I think it would have been really nice also to hear that when Mr. Cooper was talking about that we were going to be shifting like, because I know there was a lot of conversation about the mental health counselors, that we were going to be able to keep the some of those and shift those around because of the levy dollars. That that was a that those were programs that weren't going to be necessarily cut, we weren't losing members like that because of the community voting for the levy and supporting the levy. So that was it. I just kind of wanted to make sure that it's that I stated that it's really important for the community to see, oh, that's because I voted yes on the levy. Or because I voted yes on the bond, that we still have that or we're still able to maintain that even though the the state isn't giving us the money to support that, that we as a community are supporting those programs because we decided that those were important. So that was just kind of what I just kind of wanted to throw that out there, that that part of clear communication and explicit communication on what exactly our levy dollars are paid for is really going to be important. Particularly coming up on this next one, because people are going to be looking at, it's like, okay, if I have to look at where I'm tightening my belt. If I'm going to vote yes on this, I want to know exactly what it is that I'm spending that money on. Especially when we get those tax bills and we're looking at the percentages. I want to know that those tax dollars are going to pay for those. If I'm saying yes, I want to continue this program. That was it. Thank you, Alicia. And since I took input from the room, it's probably appropriate to see if there's any input from the Zoom. So is there anyone on the Zoom that wanted to comment on this topic? No. Okay, so I will open it up to the board.
Morning.
Well, quickly, based on something that Alicia was talking about, so how are we getting out the impacts of levy programs to a community that doesn't have students in school? So she was talking about this is levy done and this is levy done. But if you're not getting those emails because you're living in parts of our community that you don't have kids in school and you don't hear what's going on. How do they know?
We we still do a community focus. I think it's three times a year that we've scaled it back to. I know it used to be more frequent years ago. Director Meraldo. And historically, if we're in a levy year, if you go back and think about some of the previous years focus, they they will focus they will literally highlight levy funded programs. We will continue to use the levy funded stamp and the bond funded stamp. And we actually have, you might recall from the message from Executive Director Ingles, they've they've already planned for highlighting some levy funded programming that we do. I mean, a lot of people aren't aware that things like our our PBSES initiative. That is, those positions are levy funded as well. So beyond that, it is, you're absolutely right. It is a challenge to reach out to the community that is not naturally getting our e-news is or getting their schools e-news. It is, it is harder that we do ask questions like that when we work with groups like Strategies three sixties. What recommendations do do you have or what have you seen effective in the past in terms of reaching out to those communities? And of course, you know, because you've done them before with us. We also go out to community groups that typically don't have a lot of school age children. I'm a Rotarian. We speak, it's the Rotary Clubs, the Kiwanis Clubs that exist and and sometimes you'll meet a Rotarian or Kiwanian or that has a child in the district, but more often than not we're older and we don't have kids in school anymore. So we try to hit groups and it is a challenge for us, you know, we always make ourselves available. You've heard me say, I'll come and speak to any size group that that wants, you know, homeowners association. Rarely do we get people taking us up on that, but we do try to do outreach to those types of places. It's but it's challenging and over seventy percent of our citizens who would vote don't have a child in this school system.
So given the work that's being done now to you know, assess what's needed in the buildings.
Yeah, very preliminarily, it's just started, but yes.
Well, how long do you think it would take to finish gathering that, put together a committee to be able to come back to a recommendation? Because I can see that, you know, I think you mentioned for the April election, the filing is February twenty fifth.
Yeah, because usually at this point in time there's a recommendation to the board.
Yeah.
So we are, we are way behind normal and I get that because it's not normal.
We had other priorities. Yep.
I think Director Moore makes a really valid point. You've got to finish the springboard and it takes like a month to to get a committee, right? People have to apply and you know, you have to figure out the logistics at the meeting dates, is it in person, is it Zoom, all those things. Yeah, what's
Yeah, you're
what's your time?
You're you're you're, well, obviously depending on the date you pick would accelerate the work as a priority. If if you said you want it to be on the ballot in February. We would start tomorrow morning more aggressively than we already have. I mean, in fairness, I authorized tech folks and cap projects folks and that to begin that kind of preliminary work because one, it just needs to happen because it informs it informs a lot of things that we do, even if we weren't talking about levies, it helps inform prioritization of the resources we do have. But obviously I'm getting a little bit nervous already. That's why I asked for this conversation tonight. September ninth does feel a little late to me. I'm more comfortable with a with a springtime, just because I think it I'm going to be honest, we're really busy right now. You just, we just had a very lengthy conversation about all the work that's happening just to make school happen in person, five days a week. Full time. While we're mitigating to against the coronavirus as well. So there's a challenge there, but this is hugely important to the system. And the direction you give me is the direction that I'm going to move the team in, but I think realistically to finish the the preliminary work and develop a springboard and get a committee together and run that committee. You're probably looking at ninety days.
Eight weeks, I'd say.
What'd you say?
Eight weeks.
He said sixty days, I said ninety days.
Oh, you said how long?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks.
Sorry.
Two weeks to solicit, five, four or five weeks for a committee and a couple of weeks for sew up on the backend.
Assuming that the kind of the thing you don't know there is how many, how long the committee would be.
Right, because you're back to this question of one element of it is the one to one technology.
That's just one.
Right, that's just one, but there was lots of debate about it last time. We know there's going to be a big conversation around it this time. So I mean, that's a somewhat time consuming conversation.
Yes.
The EPNO, first off, there are limits to what we can collect.
Absolutely.
And we already have a base set of enhancements that by and large if we sew toes, we want to carry along.
We used to refer to it a lot as replacement levy, you might recall, Director Moore. So I think a lot of it would probably just be replacement. Now, remember the number, you know, and it also depends on to what level do you want to run? You don't have to run full authority. We've not ran full authority at times recently. So it again, you got to look at all all of that too. So.
That's a random, I'll put a finer point on my comment, eight weeks is about as fast as I could do it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's that'll be
That's why I said twelve weeks.
Yeah.
But eight weeks would be a slap slam together.
I think it's really important in this environment to give that committee a lot of time to be thoughtful and considerate of what's going on these levies for a couple of reasons. One is we don't have a good sense of a good pulse of the community.
That's right.
What they're willing to pay for and what they're not. We're talking about some things that we haven't, well, we did talk about one to one before, but I think the pandemic put a whole new light on why we would want to go to one to one. And that's not cheap. And and so there's a lot of, there's a lot of financial considerations in all of this. I think personally, I'll just speak for me, I don't think there's any way we could do February. Here's my concern on April. Is I think you'd have to strike some kind of agreement and Drona's already left, but you'd have to have some kind of agreement agreement with IEA in that normally speaking, if we don't have a levy in place by the end of April. We look at executing a RIF because there's forty five million dollars in here. And if we don't have that forty five million dollars, that's staff. Right? We eliminate staff. I really wouldn't want to do that if, oh, you know, we're going to pass a levy in two days. But you know, we don't know. Right? If it's sixty five percent, well, we celebrate that night. If it's forty eight point nine. We don't know how long it takes to find out. And normally we talk about if we have to execute a RIF, it's the last board meeting in April, which what we looked at it, it's like two days after the election.
That's a court, that's according to the CBA. Yes.
Yeah. So that would be something we'd have to do. Now, I know if if you talk about an August or a November election. I don't, I mean, I'm assuming, I guess I'm just assuming that our CFO would recommend that we do a RIF if we weren't going to know the results of a levy election until August.
Well, one little nuance I'll throw into that, yes, the CBA says we have to notify the union of a RIF by the last board meeting in April. I've already had a conversation with President Burkholder of the IEA about, well, you know, they've offered in the past, even last year to extend that. The problem is May fifteenth is your statutory drop dead. So you don't have a lot of wiggle room there anyway. Unless the legislators are still in session, if they're still in session, you can go to June first. But you still don't have a lot of wiggle room. So you got, you're tight in there and you're you're absolutely right. With the uncertainty, and I think there's more uncertainty around this than any levies probably in my lifetime. And I really don't know, and maybe we'll learn more when we can, you know, do some polling and things like that. But it would be very, very difficult to build a budget. Knowing that there's possibility that you're not, you're going to lose a levy collection. You wouldn't lose the whole forty five million, you'd lose about, yeah, about twenty two million.
Calendar year levy is fifty four million dollars. Remember, you adopted a budget at a deficit position of about twenty, likely drawdown of seventeen. So if it was April and worst case scenario, you would be looking at program reductions of about forty five million. Because you have a deficit position and you would miss out on half a collection of levy in she would only be collecting calendar year twenty two's second collection. That would be the worst. Well, I can see that's the worst. I do not know what enrollment is going to be, etc. Now.
Well, there could be some legislative, you know, there is a legislative session, so we could get some additional state funding and things like that. But again, worst case scenario, you lose half a collection and you burn down what you've already budgeted to burn down.
That's only if you fail.
Yeah.
If you failed in twenty twenty two. So I mean, I appreciate that February is.
Well, no, if you if you fail.
I'm not arguing for February, don't miss out.
No, I know, I mean. Yeah, you could run it again in August.
Right. No, I'm just saying, so I appreciate that February is not discussed. I think that that's bad for lots of reasons. I I don't think, in my personal opinion, that I could support April either. I really see the focus of our team. So in my mind, it's like, what is going to be the best success, the best chance for success? For especially these two women and the whole team that they're going to lead. And it's clearly been for the first the the first two weeks of school and the month preceding it, all hands on a deck for you and your team.
Yes.
To get the doors open. I think we're still about a third of the way in this wave. And I think that we will be peaking sometime around the holiday season. And then starting to ebb by late February. I can't imagine us campaigning hard in February, March for an April election. One, in the height of the pandemic, two, when our our leaders are absolutely doing everything they can just keep the doors open. And I I think that comes across a little. I think that everyone's focus is going to be on on doing things for our schools and I think a summer election would be much more successful for our community for a lot of reasons. I agree, the challenges of the whole CBA thing, I think that those can be overcome. But I I don't believe that I could personally be in support of a of a springtime election.
I think we could overcome the CBA if we run in April, but I don't know. We're not running until August. With the uncertainty of whether or not we have that levy money. I mean, we have no guarantee it'll pass in August.
But we have no guarantee it'll pass in April and if it fails in April. Like that's like a failure is going to be a big deal. Like it's not only going to be because you have to run it again. But the psychological impact to that in our community. And I just believe in watching, like I was very fearful for the best starts for kids levy, you may recall with the ninety nine hundred seventy two million dollar levy that passed with like sixty three percent of the vote in August. I think that was a really powerful statement of support for it because we don't generally see education things run in August.
Right.
But that was a very big one that passed overwhelmingly across our county. So I don't think that August would be a bad date. And we definitely watch when we watched last year's elections in February and April both. Maybe you can provide the data for us, Jake, but neither neither of them were great.
No.
So I don't want to set us up for failure. I want to set us up for success. And I think the best way to set us up for success is having a bang up school year. And so I would rather you that our team here keeps their focus on that. And I think that will be what will undergird the foundation for this levy passage.
Morning. I I would say those points are reasonable, but I just sit back and we don't have to just worry about this CBA. We need to have another CBA in hand by the start of school in September. And to not know until the beginning of August means you can't, how do you even start? How do you even start a conversation around negotiation if you don't even know if you're going to be forty forty five? Well, if we're looking at this number, it could be as much as fifty four million dollars short. And I don't know how you do that if you put off your first ask until August.
But I'll just, I'll just speak objectively about what I perceive as the pros and cons.
And your debt first, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Like, but remember, like state education is like funds basic education. So the conversation with IEA is that we're funding basic education. These are all supposed to be enhancements.
Nine million of them is is basic education that we, because we staff differently. So it's
I I understand that in that nine million, I would be willing to leverage our reserve for. So that that would be not ideal, but I would be willing to do that. So that, that would be not ideal, but I would be willing to do that. I would argue that our CBA, again, the state funds us and funds basic education and these are enhancements. So I think the conversation in the CBA discussion is, your contract is for this. Should the levy pass, this is what will happen. That, that, that's just my personal opinion because I think we, if we start, if we go back to where we were, we're gonna have legislators here in this room on that dais telling us that what we are trying to approve is absolutely in direct conflict with what they passed, post McCleary. And we lived that four years ago. I don't really want to live that again.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to interject?
That's fine. I, I will let the board, I, I have, I'm debating.
I think I asked a question and I would really appreciate if I got an answer to it.
Sorry, a lot went on between your question and what I'm about to provide you. Could you restate the question, Marnie? Sorry.
Well, I'm just, as far as how would we manage the, the, the fact that we have a negotiation that we're starting with, with our largest group? That should be starting, I'd say, January, February timeframe. They have to have a signed contract approved by us by the time school starts. And my concern is what are them, what are the possible mitigations during that? If we're not even sure what money we have until August third, or you know, it takes three weeks for it to fully certify. So it could be the end of August before we know for sure whether or not we have a pass levy.
And to add into her question, we've had to go into contracts with employees back in April, May. How do you time that into not knowing that you're going to pass this levy? Because those are full year contracts. So tie both of those pieces together.
A, here's how I would foresee the pros and cons of each period. Now, it sounds like the board has taken February out the table, which that gives me two less dates to talk about. April, obviously that is, it's a long session, this biennium. So legislature, who knows when they're going to finish, which means.
It should be right around that time.
Right around that time. Um, as Superintendent noted, our CBA, but also most importantly, the May fifteenth statutory deadline on um, continuing contracts for certificated staff, that is the most important driver uh, for us. So if we run in April and let's just say we pass, then yay, we would move forward, normal budget cycle, et cetera. We run in April and we fail. Um, we would have to quickly turn and execute a reduction force. Um, and then a rather large one, as I've discussed with you. Now, you have to make assumptions about are you gonna have a double or a single levy failure? But then if, if you are able to run again in August, that allows you two levy runs prior to the new school year. Right? So that, that's a positive. You're not, wouldn't necessarily be affecting that start of a new school year. Now, to Harland's point, one strategy is to be successful. Can continue to communicate our value to the community and hopefully, you know, move forward out of the pandemic and um, rebuild uh, our school system, you know, continue to offer value. And that's, that's a more um, strategic potentially, but also has the, the downside of if we, you've already done a RIF in April. If you run in August, you do not have sufficient reserves to cover the whole thing. So you, if you choose in August, you're gonna have to execute reduction force in April. I don't know what signal that sends to your, your, um, your staff uh, or community. Just, you know, how it makes and this levy is very important. We fund this and we had to do layoffs because.
We have to be very careful about that so we don't have a PDC violation. Can't be threatening the community.
No, agree, but the, the, that would be true too. That would be, that'd be very difficult messaging right then too, because you would have to be executing operational things during an election cycle, which we can do. Now, the one thing about if you pass in August, great, we can put the budget together and be done. But if you fail, that means you're gonna start the school year. Um, and then you'll have an, your school year will have an uncertain start because you will have, you'll have to run in November if you choose to. And you know, that'd be your two options because you only run twice in a calendar year. So there's a lot of pluses and minuses at each one. I think obviously you're a conservative financial person. I would run in now if, if it was possible and secure that funding for the school district with the voter's approval. But again, that's not an option. Um, we have to push that out. Certainty is the best thing for a finance person. But um, I would say you're looking at pros and cons of each. I don't see any incident in which you, if you fail in April, you must do a reduction of force. If you choose to run in August, you're likely to make program reductions. I would recommend that you would make program reductions prior to that election, which sends its own signal. And then if you fail in August, you're gonna have to run in November, which affects that start of the new school year. So there's a lot of.
Well, and to be clear, if you wait to do a RIF until you get the outcome of an April election, you could be giving yourself like ten business days to turn a RIF.
Correct Superintendent, that'd be correct.
And, you know, we wouldn't have the same situation that we had this past year where our teachers were working remotely and we had concerns about our ability to actually literally physically put the RIF notices in people's hands. But ten days to execute a RIF is, that, that's, it's tight. I mean, we can, we can do it, but it's tight.
Um, I'm more concerned about the possibility of two consecutive reduction enforced, reductions enforced in two consecutive years just because we thought we had a better chance of passing levy in the fall. I mean, I just feel like we're really messing with people's lives in a way that I would rather not. And I'm sorry, Sydney's got her hand up. I just, I had to get.
Yeah, you, you, you went to where I'm going. I, for me, I, the wait for August, I, I, the math doesn't make sense to me. It's materially not that much different from a date perspective, but the risk is much higher. So, you know, we still have to back up your, um, you know, the process of forming the team, forming the recommendation before that date. So to get to a February twenty fifth filing, we're talking about a mid-December start versus a, a, a March start. For me, the environmental differences between middle of December and the beginning of March is just immaterial to me. I don't know what exciting, potentially you could see spikes in, in COVID, but we're gonna run school one way or another. We're gonna run school with the process we have. We're gonna run them with the procedures um, that we talked about earlier, it'll be formalized. So for me, the risk reward is not there. I would, for me, August and November, both not options. I would go faster to get to February, April at the latest. Because a RIF two years in a row, the lack of competence that you put into the system is not, is not worth it to me.
Well.
Nobody's gonna wanna work.
The, the, what, the, what it would do to morale is significant and that is very, very concerning to me.
Yeah. So I would, I would mostly agree. I, I really struggle seeing us get to February because I can't see the committee doing a, not only adequate, but an excellent job to come forward with a package that is the, hopefully the desire of the community. Um, plus the campaign time with a, a early February date is so challenging because it's so much of it is sort of during the holidays because the ballots come out so early in January. At least with the April date, the um, it gives, it gives us time to go out to the community with that hopefully really good package and share it through the months of, you know, January, February, March, as we get to that April election. I think our biggest issue there is how to manage the potential RIF if we're to fail. And we'd have to come up with a plan.
Yeah.
That would allow us to streamline that in what will hopefully be a case that doesn't happen.
But at least it's potential in that case, not certain. It's certain the next two.
And um, and hopefully it would both be, well, like the board has always been out championing the, the levy as well as much of our teaching staff getting involved with the volunteers.
Only in our off duty time.
Only in their off duty time, but we have the, them, they are a part of our community and help with this. And that would kind of be all hands on deck to help inform our community about the, the needs of our schools to have these levies pass. So to me, the April makes the most sense. Um, I just, I can't see waiting until August and guaranteeing we have to riff because I don't see how we can move forward with this contracts that we would have to go into for a full year with the potential of failing the levy.
Yeah, to Marnie's point, I agree. And Marnie, hit her head up.
Well, two things, if I can remember them. The first one is, I think, you know, I, I hear Harland's take on last year, it was really not successful in February and April. I think the difference is that people were voting for that April one, early in April, and may not have had their kid back in school or saw what's, what their kid was only going two days a week or whatever it was. So I think the difference, and I, and I don't know what districts they are. So I think so, for some of it is, I think there will be a different perspective from families and from the community now that students are back full time in school. And so my, and then my second point, I lost it. It was just there. You were gonna say something though.
And, and I think the good thing, I think when Superintendent and I talked about this conversation is what we really need this evening is how soon you want to run um, to get the work done. Because even if you do the work in December, January, February, and to Harland's point, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe COVID happens as he's, as Dr. Gallander says, and we need to postpone it. You can always do that, but we still need to do the work. And so whatever you ultimately decide when you actually vote on your ballot measure, which you all have a chance to do when it comes before you, most importantly, I think the Superintendent and I were really working on what, we need to timeline the work product to get to you. So if April is as soon as you would like to run, perfect. Then we know the committee timelines then, for the most part, and what the cadence is. That still gives you the latitude to, you know, if something needs to change later, that you, the board has that prerogative and always will. I'm not saying you are going to, but you could still have that ability. I just want to make sure, sure people knew that, that you said April now, that it's not the final word on the election date by any means. Or the board can make a decision at any time on when, on when to call an election.
I think there's another point from a, a campaign perspective, which is, um, and I hate to even talk about if we fail, but you have to in this conversation. If we failed a levy in February, there's not a whole lot that the campaign can do between February and April. There's just not that much time. If you're gonna run, you fail in February, you gotta run in April. Ballots are gonna drop, what, the beginning of April? You've got, what, six weeks in there to do something and probably not a lot of funds to do it with. If you were to have a failure in April, you have a lot more time to regroup before August. Um, Marnie.
Okay, so I remembered my other point. Um, the second one is I think we really need to do the survey of families wherever Alicia is out in the world.
Yeah.
We need to do that now.
Yes.
Uh, we'll likely have to do it again, probably in the January, February timeframe. But I think really getting out there and having that understanding of what is it the community's biggest concerns? We are, during our calendaring, we're gonna be talking about town halls. So I want the community to know, we have received those emails. We actually are listening and hearing you. Um, I, I hope that you've heard today that the board is really concerned about how families are impacted by the decisions that the district is making. Um, so I think that's gonna be really, really, really important. Surveying them, us having our town halls, getting to hear with the community, getting out there so the community can see us and they don't have to just, you know, watch us on video. I would say if you are watching, I know a lot of you have been very frequent emailers. Now is the time, that's the information I'd really love to hear in my emails over the next two weeks is your thoughts on a levy. Just overall, your thoughts on a levy, your thoughts on one to one. I really want to know what's the community thinking now. Feel free to email your board because I, this is a huge decision. Whether, I, I can't see not choosing April. I can't choo, imagine choosing later than that. I don't think at this point, our staff has to know that we are seeking for those funds as soon as we can. This, that's gonna be feasible for us to really understand that we have their back because I agree. If I had to riff again without at least hearing from the voters.
Yeah.
That would be devastating to me. I sat through and read every single name under that line. I wanted them to know, even if they don't, that I read their names, I know who they are. And I know we were affecting individuals and I don't want to have to do that again.
Yeah.
The um, the other challenge um, to hopefully put the nail in the coffin of February is that if we, if we, you, you just really cannot go from a February election that fails to an April running because you have to file your resolution by February twenty fifth, which happens to be mid winter break. Which means if you, what, what are you going to do as far as figuring out what your new best package is that you want to take to the voters in April?
Basically have to roll the same package forward.
And it just failed. So I can't see how we would come up with something different because at that point I'd want to reengage the committee and ask them to help us figure out potentially what to do or what to change. And we're not gonna be able to engage them in time. So it would be very difficult to go February and April. You'd have to go February and August.
You only have a week turnaround. We looked at the last time we were very close.
You and I did this.
We didn't, um, Executive Director, Attorney, myself and Ron sat down the morning after our close election, called legal counsel, prepped the documents.
I know.
Because if we were gonna rerun and it has to be filed in six days, you have, like you said, maybe a week in there.
Hardly two weeks, but that is not enough time.
Well, and when it's close.
And you have to wait for it.
You don't know.
Yeah.
So all the more reason for me to take February off the table, focus on a really good run at April, doing all the mitigations you can around what needs to be dealt with as far as the CBA. And go with that.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the, the biggest downside of April, I, I guess as opposed to February, is that you guys are potentially going to have to do a lot of planning work about a possible reduction in force that everybody hopes isn't gonna happen and that work is just gonna be wasted, right? That's the best case.
Just like I have to plan for the possibility of the schools getting shut down again.
Yeah. So, so I know that that's, that's a lot of work that might not need to be done. But I also think trying to, trying to do it in February is a whole lot of work that has to start yesterday. And I mean, it's just so tight. Um, but I, I really feel strongly, I don't want to mess with people's lives and careers two years in a row if I don't absolutely have to, and I don't think I absolutely have to. So um, I really don't want to go later than April.
I would say um, to an earlier point um, that Director Gallagher made, while it complicates potentially your teacher bargain, it's not impossible to put provisions. And we actually have some provisions in our contract now where we could say, in the event of the passing of the levy, X happens. In the event of the failure, X happens. So you, you can create language like that. Um, you know, and again, not, not as a way to create incentive for our staff to work on the levy or anything like that. It's really about um, the programming for our students.
But I mean, we do have things in the levy like sick leave, substitute teachers, teacher workdays, um, while teacher responsibilities outside of basic education, all that stuff is in the CBA.
I.
And health benefits.
I would know, I would know, there is another way to address some of those issues. The fact that we are funded by the state with subs at the level we are is kind of ridiculous. Um, that's why you see money in there. We still backfill our specials, our, our special services department so they can serve our students with special needs so that we can meet our legal obligation. So I would argue, well, McCleary did a really nice job of, of getting us a lot closer to where we would be. Well, legally, they may call a lot of what we do with the levy enhancements. I actually, I guess it could also be a shell game because if I have to cover my special ed costs, I'll take it out of general fund and whatever it is I'm doing over here, I'll do out of levy. But I would argue, we are not fully funded and there is room for the legislature to still push money into the Issaquah School Districts and district, public school districts across the state. And I would also remind people that we were um, one of twelve, I believe, uh, it is Dr. Gallagher, twelve districts that was not made whole by the legislature last year. While we appreciate the effort that was made to set us a floor, if you will, on ESER fund, to, to backfill ESER funding. We don't have the funding that a lot of districts do. So we be, this is exactly where we were before McCleary. We become a district that is more dependent on levies than other districts. And I think there's, there's a fundamental unfairness there, but it, that is what it is. So we need to work every angle of, and it's been this way my. way my entire career, of trying to resource our school system. The legislative angle, the local voter angle, whatever we can do.
I'm sorry, Sydney, go ahead.
I just put it up.
I'm not always looking that way, and she whispers at me.
Anne's got me. So I just wanna clarify our action tonight, because I think we've been discussing a lot of when do we run. I think the point Jake makes is, how soon do we have to get started? So I just wanna clarify which decision we're making tonight, and make that one would be.
We're not really making any decisions.
We're not really making.
Yeah, we didn't, this was for discussion only.
Discussion only, okay.
I also thought that something else, and I don't know how much time we wanna dedicate, maybe we do it at a different time, was talking about giving, giving some initial thoughts on what we would wanna see in the levy. I would assume we wanna continue what we're doing, but I can't make that assumption of all my fellow board members. And is there anything else additional that we would want to include on that? And I know some of that will end up being a cost breakdown, but I think one of the things that I've learned over the past year is, is that more guidance from the board is never a bad thing.
Yeah, we would actually appreciate that. And I would envision Director Maraldo work studies with the board as we, you know, we always try to gather that input. So it's a multi-layered process. We go out, we look at facilities. I've got the tech team starting to do some exploratory. We would do, you mentioned the polling that we're already looking to engage in, but we would do work studies as well. That all informs the development of the package. And you're right about another thing, too. It's easy for us all to say, what would we like? What would we like? And then Jake comes in and says, well, here's the tax implications. And so we have to, all of that has to be considered. But we've done this before. We can do this again. I will say the one thing to Sydney, to your point about what's the decision tonight. Well, there is no decision that we asked you to make. I do feel like I don't have to go home and start working on a February election campaign tonight. I believe that I got a clear enough signal that there's not an appetite for us to do that. And I thank you for that, because to Harlan's earlier point, the team is working really hard right now to not just get the schools open, we gotta keep them open. And that's, that's a daily grind every day.
And to finish my point, I think that, I think the board might be more equipped to provide you more guidance as well after we have our town halls.
Dan?
And I was just gonna chime in, because we kinda cut you off when we said that the board isn't making a decision, because we're very particular about that. But he's right. Really, what we're doing is just giving that gist, that if February is off the table, then it gives you your timeline to start working without having to go, if your head's on fire, because you've gotta get to that February date and what you, what that means. So I think, although we didn't make a decision, we gave him enough information to know that if we don't have to deal with February, you're aiming for the earliest April.
Right. And longtime committee watchers will know that we always tell the committee, we don't know the date yet, until the board decides, and they make the decision. And I mean, every, every time.
We have a made a decision here. You just said that we're not, we're not leaning towards going earlier than.
I would not be standing up a levy committee with the idea that I have to have a resolution ready to go to the county elections by December 10. I wouldn't be doing that based on the conversation that I've been listening to tonight. I am recognizing that, the other thing I'm not hearing is, I think it's crazy to even contemplate a levy. I didn't hear that either. So I'm thinking that we're looking in that April, August timeline. Plus, I also wanted, I wanted you to, I want us to all have the same set of information. When, when would we get our last collection? When, you know, so I think this was kind of a grounding exercise for us all as well.
Now, to Marty's point, I agree that we need to talk a little bit about what the board would like to see in the levy. I agree with Ron that we should probably do it as a work study. And I think we can probably do that pretty quickly. One of the things that I had talked about with you in agenda planning that I would really like to see before we start talking about what goes in the levy, is how we spent those ESER dollars that we received, how we spent, I know there was a lot of money last year that we spent before we actually got the dollars to backfill us and make us whole. And there's some money that we're spending this year. And I would like to see an itemized accounting of that, just because, and I think the community wants to see that, too. And that would help us figure out, you know, what did we do to help kids during the pandemic? And of those things we did, what would we like to continue if we had the money? And how would that feed into what's in the EPNO now?
I believe that's pretty easy, because I believe we had to code ESER dollars.
But I'd like to know, what did we spend that wasn't ESER dollars on COVID mitigations, whether it's last year, this year, et cetera?
Yeah, that'd be good, too.
That came out of our own pocket.
Right. Because, yeah, because not everything that we did to mitigate COVID and/or to create hybrid learning opportunities and remote learning opportunities, et cetera, et cetera, we didn't get ESER money for all of that.
The millions of dollars that you all approved, we referenced earlier, to, to keep bus drivers, for example.
Right. And that would be one of those things.
Yeah, we did that with some employee groups. We kept benefits for employee groups. I mean, that was millions of dollars out the door.
And some of it came out of ESER. And I would just like to really have a clear understanding of that. And I think it would help the community, too, as far as understanding the kinds of financial conversations we're having.
Director Weaver, so my team and I are able to provide you the data the board needs. Can I restate what you're asking for?
Sure.
You're asking for the pandemic costs both covered and not covered by ESER funds. That's what I heard.
That is exactly what I am asking.
Okay. Mr. Attorney and I will, is it working right now?
Perfect.
Fingers on the keyboard.
Perfect. Thank you.
And while we talk about those ESER funds, I know, I think either via email or I've seen Facebook posts of people wondering, why are we taking the ESER funds as they come in from the feds and putting it back into our reserves? Can't you spend that elsewhere? And so I hope they heard some of this conversation, like, we might have to utilize our reserves. So it's always good to build those back up as soon as you can. It's not that we wanna have many sitting and then not use it. Oh, we have a need over here. It's that we, we need to be prepared for needs that we can't, we can't foresee right now.
Well, and some of our reserves are earmarked, and some of our reserves are required by the, the financial agencies that guarantee our bonds, right, that rate our bonds. So that's, that's not an insignificant consideration.
Yeah, and I would remind us, we've talked at length about this, but we know that a massive liability that we have out there, that we have a cost to incur, is in our special services department. And we've started a big investment in that, and I'm really proud of the team and the work they're doing. But those costs are gonna be ongoing for a while. And by a while, I mean, probably a few years.
Okay, so do you have what you need?
I appreciate the conversation. That was very helpful for me. I can go back and have a conversation with my staff. At some point, I'll be reaching out to Dawn and Alicia as well, because I'd like to kinda glean what, what their thinking was tonight, because ultimately, we can't run the campaign. Only the volunteers can run the campaign. We can provide factual information, and we will continue to do that, and continue to tell our story and our gratitude to our voters for their previous support of our levies. So yeah, this has been helpful for me. And like I said, the one important takeaway is, I don't need to finish this meeting and start to work on a February campaign tonight. So thank you for that.
But I do think that committee should probably happen sooner rather than later. And I do think, I want them to, to do a quality job, right? I want them to go into depth and have some really, really good conversations, because they're all community members, and they're all gonna have opinions about, you know, what the, what pocketbooks will bear. And, and I guess the last thing I wanna say, and I know, I know this part's hard, because we sort of take the people who volunteer for the committees, we can't just grab them off the street. But, you know, it would be good to have some dissenting voices, right? It would be good to have some people who aren't, aren't real sure they wanna be paying for these levies, and, and, and hear those voices and have those conversations. So I don't want it rubber stamped.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Anything else? You're giving me that area of old down there. Sorry, not you. Okay, so, yeah, we're officially two hours behind. Legislation. Harlan?
I know that there's a request for us to have a further discussion, but we'll hold on that for now, given the time of night. Because I have no updates.
Okay. Did we wanna talk about the SR letter? Because you thought I was cutting you off at the last meeting, and I was not intending to do that.
No, I think you clarified that. So I will bring that back to us.
Okay. So that's it? That was painless? Works in progress.
Okay. As I had said, I'd been trying to spend a fair amount of time visiting schools. Also, obviously, the most work we've been doing is working on issues related to the start of the school year. But I do have a few things that I wanted to share. One, and it kind of came into the conversation earlier tonight, but all public school districts now are being asked to plan for a possible vaccination clinic in the event that there is an approved COVID vaccine for children under the age of 12. We were already thinking that way. We are a district that was a leader in doing our own vaccination clinics. It made it really nice for all of us that got vaccinated there when we had to account, because we do have to account for board members' vaccination status as well. And you were already in the system. Those got it at our clinic. Some got it a little earlier, but they've already submitted their vaccination card as well. So there is some pre-planning that's happening with that. It's a little tricky, because we're, we're reaching out to Costco pharmacies again. But it's kind of like, well, we know we're gonna need this. We just don't know when. So it's kinda like stand up and be ready. So, but we, the Department of Health and the state are taking a little different approach to this, because they are saying to all school districts, we want you to be planning for something like this. So we're way ahead of that game. So.
That's really good.
I also just wanted to touch, touch base a little bit on, you know, all the regular work moves forward as well. And frankly, a lot of that is the work that, that is exciting for educators. So for example, we have our September All Admin next week, and we will get updates with, on COVID enrollment and bargaining and kind of all of those things. But we'll also be receiving some professional development from our MTSS, our Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, which is a big initiative in our district. And we'll be receiving that from our MTSS team led by our Director of MTSS, Spencer Fealing. So I'm excited about that. It's an important initiative for the district, and we're keeping moving that forward. And then lastly, this is not really a works in progress, but it was something that you may have seen. Alicia pushed it out. But we, we have a couple of students at Skyline High School, a brother and sister, and then some of their classmates, who started a free peer tutoring service for low-income students. And the names, I didn't get the last names, but it's Sophie and her brother Josh and others. King TV did a story on this. I didn't even know they were doing it. And it was just heartwarming that these, you know, based on, they just saw a need, and the program has moved statewide. So we have Skyline kids who are now peer tutoring students, and all from, they said, from, you know, early elementary grades all the way up through high school classes, and offering that service for free. We have amazing students in our community. So just very, very, I just thought that was a neat story, and I thought I would share it. And that's all I have, President Weaver.
Okay. We could possibly spend a half an hour on calendaring. I have this two-page memo from Diane. The first thing, which isn't even on here, is just to remind you all that I have to submit the Board of Distinction application on Friday.
What? Announcements and correspondence.
I'm sorry, I skipped something. I did. Yeah, okay, announcements, correspondence. I'm sorry. Really? That was it?
Just, just wanted to make sure we could check that box. I'm a little bit like that.
I'm sorry. It's, I get this way when meetings go two hours too long.
I said, these days, we get so many, I really wouldn't know if one was missed or not.
You know, it is really hard. And I want to tell people, because I've, I've seen a lot of remarks of, you know, well, I've emailed the board eight times, and I've never gotten a response. The volume of email that we get, that we have gotten really ever since the pandemic started, is huge. And it would be a full-time job to individually respond to it. And I'm sorry, but I, I don't have time for a full-time job. We do try to always have it acknowledged by Diane Denbary. And so you should be getting that email. And just because you are not getting a personalized response, please don't think that we're not reading each and every email, because we are. And you will hear us talking about, well, we've received a lot of email about this, or a lot of email about that. And I know you're not getting the personalized response that you would really, really like. And I'm sorry about that. But we do read each and every email, and we do consider them all when we make our decisions and recommendations. So I just wanted to say that. Okay, back to the tedious, back to the tedium. Board of Distinction application, I have to submit a week from tomorrow. So if I could please have everything from you guys by, like, Wednesday or Thursday, that would be awesome. Also, I sent out the link for the board's self-assessment, because that's sort of part of being a Board of Distinction, and we should do it anyway. I mean, it's, it's a good thing for us to reflect. And I think I asked for that to be done also by next Friday. And that went out to you, too, right?
I've got it. I've got it noted on my desk. Take this by the 17th.
So that's, that's my two cents. Okay, so potential dates for a board town hall. Is Harlan coming back? This is sort of, is baby. I am totally not clear on the board town hall concept in that, well, my concern is people are going to come with questions that are school-specific and district-specific, and the board is going to have to look to the administration to answer them. If somebody has a question about, why can't my kid eat lunch outside at X school? I personally have no idea. So I would certainly, like this says, 9:23 or 9:30, but Ron's not available on 9:23.
I'm speaking to the Influence the Choice.
Yeah, no, and that's why I'm not questioning.
And I'll be, I'm becoming Chair of the Board of Directors of Influence the Choice, so I won't be there either.
So you're gonna get to spend some time that night with me, it sounds like.
And I'm not available either.
You guys aren't even letting me finish my sentence, because my sentence was going to be, I'm not really comfortable doing that without the superintendent. I don't, I mean.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay.
Were you interested?
And not only superintendent, but.
Well, I, I mean, you saw what we went through tonight.
Yeah.
Talk about issues. I guess I would, I would ask some questions, too, about what structure are you talking about? Because if you're talking about really just basically public input, but you're gonna respond to it, that could be really challenging. And I'm not, I'm not sure how that would play out. You could provide some guiding questions or themes that you want people to weigh in. You could ask for input in advance and then use the town hall. Like, when we did it for COVID, you'll recall, we collected the questions in advance, and then we presented the answers. That's not really a town hall, more of a presentation.
Yeah.
I'm just, I wasn't sure exactly what you were all envisioning in this.
My understanding of a town hall is whether or not you have a limit to how many questions. Maybe we say we are taking 20 questions, and you can do them in advance. But us really hearing from the community and answering their questions. That's, if I watch political town halls, that's what I've seen, is that they're gonna be hard questions. But I think one of the things would be really letting the public know, hey, we're looking for more policy-type questions, things about the basic, the overall structure of the, of the district, not something incidental at your one child's school, unless there's a greater policy question behind that. Because I think we don't, we don't get an opportunity to hear those higher-level communications. But we also haven't been answering. So the public still has no idea. If it's not on our agenda,
Right.
we're not talking about it.
I, I think your, your, your approach makes sense, Director Maraldo, because I, I think you're right. If you just. If you just, if it's just wide open, frankly, I better have my entire staff there because that's who's going to be answering the questions. And I know when Director Gallager first spoke to this, he talked about this really being a board-focused town hall. So yes, if it's kept at that level, I think it makes more sense. I'll be just honest, I'm nervous about a workload if I have to prep my staff to do kind of what they did tonight, but to not actually know what the topics are going to be. Just come and be prepared to talk on anything. That would, that would be, that would be interesting for us. So I, that's why I'm curious about what structure you were looking for.
So Harlan, we're talking about the structure of the board town hall and Marnie made the comment, I was concerned that if we just have an open forum where people can ask questions, they're going to be very school-focused and focused on things that would be administrative rather than board questions. So Marnie was talking about, could we try to focus it more on policy? Or somehow communicate to the public that that was the kind of input or questions that we were looking for. And so you were the one that originally suggested this, so I'm curious as to what you were envisioning.
I think we have to start out at, there's brokenness and we need to have healing. And part of it, the first part is acknowledging that and to just listen. And so I don't think that we need staff there.
So you're not talking about a Q and A format?
We absolutely, but the difference is we can respond. The difference is in public, but we don't respond. Like, they will say, like, we've heard enough and we can, we know enough. Like if there's an addition, if there's a question that's asked that we can't answer, we can absolutely write it down and give back to them. Like, that's okay. Like, we do that even with public input. Our staff goes around it and does that. We probably know 95% of the answers that a question may be asked. I think we need to just spend time listening. I don't, sometimes I feel like we're out of touch with what the community may be feeling and I think we need to just listen. So I don't think you, I wouldn't want staff there because I think people may feel uncomfortable speaking, frankly. So I think we need to start with listening. And I think that from that, then we can use, hey, here's what we heard. And then you can have focused community conversations on groups, topics, but I really think we just need to listen. That's my personal opinion. And you can provide boundaries on saying, hey, we are going to spend a half an hour listening about COVID concerns and box it in. We're going to spend time listening on your input on possible timing of a levy, if you wanted to hear about that. So I think, I don't think it's, I think it's, we could do a couple buckets and say, here's the time we plan on spending listening to it. But I just want to, I want to hear from the community and be able to respond to some of their concerns. Because the point of, I think there's this, like where our superintendent says, oh, it's good because the community gets to hear the dialogue that happens and sort of this Q and A as we are grilling staff on the school reopening and all of that. Right. But it shouldn't have to be that way. So I want the opportunity for the community to have their questions and for us to be able to answer them. And I think by late September, we'll have one a clear sense on, I think the COVID concerns will be really narrowed down because you guys will have a month under your belt of school. And I think, yeah, I just, I just think there's so much that we need to just listen because we haven't had that opportunity. It's different than when we just heard all the angry people from one side to the other all last year. Like, that's not the intent. The intent is just to say, we're here and we're here to start by listening and then, yeah, that would be my vision.
Are you thinking in-person, virtual, hybrid?
Just wondering.
Yeah. I think in-person would be my preference. I think hybrid would be problematic because I think 90% of the people who would write comments would be, would be virtual. I think there is a lot of power in a community being able to hear itself and hear the dialogue. And then you lose that part in, in a Zoom-type experience. And Lord knows, for willing to have curriculum night with thousands of parents in our buildings, we should feel comfortable having a town hall with dozens of parents in our building.
So I'm very supportive of the idea of town halls. I, you know, I like what you're saying about it's the opportunity to listen. What I, what I think we have to get down to is like, logistically, what does that mean? I think an open, an open forum to listen, we will likely end up with very long segments of monologue. And I don't, I just don't know how productive or how, how many points of view you can get that way. I think practically, we'd either have to have a listening session per a very specific topic. Like, this one is going to be on, you know, safety concerns or back to school with COVID. And the other one is going to be on something very different to even narrow in to get multiple perspectives or point of view on, on something tangible. So I don't know how valuable for me it would be if it's, you know, an hour of just random scatter. I think it would be more helpful to kind of hone in on a subject matter and, and, you know, either use, potentially get questions ahead. And we pick what are the questions that seem to be coming in most prevalent and pick a community member that represents that question to bring that question forward to start a conversation. I think the logistics, I think the logistics of pulling off what you're describing is just actually pretty difficult. And I think we'd end up with very long sections of monopolized discussion.
And I guess, so I mean, we could structure it with, people could ask their questions on mentee if wanted and then that would, we would see what the natural groupings are. And then have a dialogue about those particular groupings of conversation. I don't think when it's a purely a question or listening or if they want to hear, you know, it could, it could be where we get people to put their questions into mentee. And then while we're going to do that, we could have a half hour of just listening, the verbal dialogue, that's less dialogue, where more people just shouting, or I mean, speaking their concerns. And then we could spend the next hour, so be like 90 minutes, so have our listening. And then 60 minutes of us actually going through and answering the questions that were put into essentially the chat box.
Yeah.
And I think that way that would balance both and allow us to focus it. But I just think any part of it, we need, we need a part for them to be able to just speak their piece, which we do here.
Yeah, I like, I like the, I like the mentee option. I think it could be interesting the, if people could somehow enter the question, we could see the prevalence of a certain question and we have some sort of identifier and just pick one, hey, this seems to be a big question. And pick the third person down and say, tell us, you know, if you could give us some more insight into why is this important to you, your story from a community member's school, to get like a specific story that goes with that set of questions. I think that, that maybe could work. That way you know, hey, this is a common question. And you, we could still get the richness of an individual or two stories about that question. And I like your point at the end. It's just more of like, hey, let's knock down this list of other questions we have could work.
Yeah, I like, I like that, having, having a chance to do both where we can just listen. Because depending on where we do this and how often, I mean, do we need to do this three times in each of the feeder patterns? I'm not sure. I don't have an answer to that one, but having it to where we might be hearing from people that we haven't heard from. And that's my goal is, if you, you know, for those that haven't really raised their hand, how do you give them an opportunity to hear what they have to say as well? But I agree, we should need to do this live. We can record it and have it posted later, but a hybrid, even a hybrid, I, I think you, I want to value the people that are in the room that will come to us and say, here's what, here's what I'm thinking.
And once we get to a focused topic, when it's a community conversation, having a hybrid would be much easier to navigate. Because in general, the same, since it's a focused topic, it's probably going to be all the same types of questions or concerns, whether you're in person or whether you're not. So, and I can happily to run, run the mentee stuff and do it in real time. We would need to be at a place that has a screen that people would see the answers. And then if there's groupings, I could then ask a question, have people rank them on, hey, what are the top three out of these topics all came up? What are the top three you would like the board to have a conversation about? So we can do that sort of in-real-time stuff, like mentee allows us to do that. I would believe that we would need to be a place where people could be spaced out and then there would be readily available mics for them to walk up to. You know, like at any of our big meetings, so. Right, I think Izakla comes to my mind as far as the stage. I'm assuming it has a big drop-down screen that we could project and do that. I think also I would just want to model the in-person part. Like, we're asking all of our staff to be in-person. Like, for us to then do it hybrid because we're afraid. I mean, none of us has said that, but I mean, I don't want that to be the perception.
Right, because otherwise it could be to try to get the other people to engage. But I think you're right that doing it in person, because we're all willing to be there in person, to engage with them in person. And I think, to say, I think the mentee is a good idea because what, one of my concerns about having people come up supposedly just ask their question if they're at a microphone is, unless there's any kind of a limit, it becomes a very, it can become a very long, detailed, way too specific about my child or my small experience. And that's not exactly what we're looking for. So if it was in mentee, if there are those, they fall out to the bottom because they're not part of the greater grouping of topics, right? Unless they lend to a little bit of a greater grouping, but it helps us kind of deal with that.
Okay, so, so we have a sort of plan. Sort of, okay. Oh, yeah, 9:23, that's, yeah, nobody's, I'm not here either.
So let's, yeah, let's, if we're, so back to Marnie made a point, are we doing, or are we trying to do this just once?
I think we just, I started with one. We started with one in the middle of the district.
So if we're all trying to be there, I know.
People show up, then I'm not doing another one.
Right, that is true.
So are people available on the 30th?
No.
Oh, I was a yes for the 30th.
I am a yes on the 30th.
I was a yes on the 30th.
You can do it without me. Because I can't change.
Are you a yes, Harlan?
I'm willing to be a yes. I mean, it's curriculum night. There's always a school board thing on.
Yeah, I just, I just want tonight.
You would do want to, you know, you want to check with the facility too, because you, I don't, I know what you might have going on there, but you could have other things that are already booked for the facility. Yeah.
It was tonight. It's tonight. I'm missing it.
I think they strategically plan them on school board meetings.
We used to forbid them from doing that, but we got so many schools that it was like, oh, we're going to have to have your curriculum night in December.
Yeah, every school board member could potentially be at two or three schools. Do we want to try to schedule this for the 30th?
I think, yeah, I think enough time, but yet expeditiously to do because I think if we get a robust turnout and if there's a lot of things that then we need to pivot and say, okay, we need to do one in each feeder pattern and we need to, so. As you saw or have heard, my concern is like, I think we need to start repairing and building that bridge ourselves. There's the work that the district is doing by having two weeks of school that's great. We, we have to do those same sort of repairing with the community of that post-recovery and rebuild before we even talk about levy, in my opinion, if we want any chance for it to be successful regardless of the date.
Okay, so we don't need to have staff there. I still think it would be nice to have Ron there.
I would, I would hope Ron.
I'm available on the 30th. I had another speaking engagement on the 23rd.
No, I can't do the 23rd either.
That I'm chairing, so.
I consider Ron one of us, so.
Yeah.
And he would know.
And your brother's.
Well, technically, he's Secretary of the Board.
Yes.
I think somewhere in the corridor, so then I look at the corridor, just the corridor of schools. And I think that the sound, you'd have to do it in the Commons of IMS, which the sound reverberation would not be as good.
Yeah.
Or the IHS Commons. And then you're at, the next biggest one would be, I guess, the Clark Commons, which is pretty big. But still, I think I worry about the acoustics. That's what drove me to IHS.
And I think you can space out the chairs.
I guess I worry that this might not be big enough is my concern.
Yeah, it's hard to say, you know, that's the interesting thing.
I don't know if we're going to get two or 200. I mean.
But if, I agree with you. I don't, I think we'll get like 20. But if we got 50, 50 would be uncomfortable for people probably here.
Yeah.
But it would be, would be totally comfortable at IHS.
Yeah.
Right? Because how do, how many people?
You had mentioned the Commons at Clark, you know, that's actually the old middle school common, so that's much bigger than.
No, I know it's bigger. I'd say the thing about that.
It's not as great, but you know, that we, for years, we put on concerts and stuff in that facility, so it's not terrible. And, but I don't know, I don't know what the tech setup is there anymore because it's been a few years since I was there. I would probably lean towards, again, if you had a small enough group, if you knew, a library would be a good setting. But I think you just don't know. So probably maybe the pack. Maybe, you know, if the pack's available, it would let you spread people out a lot. And I know they have screen ability and all of that, so maybe that would be the first thing we would shoot for. I just don't know about the availability of it.
Okay, so I need to work with Diane to make this happen. Okay, what time? Six, seven?
It seems like seven, it seems like slightly later is better for the community members.
Seven?
Like.
6:30?
I think like 7:00 to 8:30 might be a good timeframe.
Yeah. Let families actually eat and get their.
Okay. And you'll do, you'll do the mentee part because I think you're the only one who knows now.
Yeah, I will happily do that part and sort of frame it.
And Marnie, maybe you and I can talk a little bit about this, a little more about this agenda. Gosh, it's.
That's tomorrow.
In 12 hours.
Twelve and a half hours?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be meeting in 12 hours.
Cool. Okay, so that's one. That was the hardest one, I think. Board staff listening sessions for middle school. Looks like IHS at 8:00 AM on one of three Wednesdays. Oh, I'm sorry. I did read that right. Yes, thank you.
9:29 was my only available.
I am not here on the 29th. You can do it without me. That's the only one for you?
Of those three.
Okay.
And I have an eye appointment for my daughter and I at 10:00 in Newcastle, so I could squeeze it in, but it's not preferred.
That's not good for me. I could do the 13th. But again, this is one of those where.
I can do either.
I can do the 13th or the 20th. I cannot do the 29th.
Can't do the 20th.
You know, as I, as I look at this, it's going to be a little more challenging than your, the one that you did at Maywood, for example, because Liberty is real close. Your middle schools just aren't as close here to the high school for that. And we put that Wednesday morning there because this would have to be voluntary on the staff's part. It's their time if they want to come. Obviously, if you do it at IHS, then you're gonna, you know, it's a lot easier for IHS staff. But if you're coming, for example, from Cougar Mountain Middle School to try to come down for that and then get back to the start of the school day, that's going to be a little problematic.
And no different than when we had it at Pine Lake for Pine Lake, Skyline and Beaver Lake. That's part of unfortunately about being a big school district.
Yeah, even there, it's pretty close, but from, from Ringdole to IHS, that's going to take you 20, 25 minutes to drive. So you probably won't get those folks, is all I'm saying. But, you know, IMS, yes, they can walk across the parking lot.
I'd recommend we host it at IMS in their library.
Or IMS, just to be consistent with. Oh, yeah, because you'd used middle schools before.
So I'm sorry. How many people were available on the 29th? Show of hands. Just two?
On the 29th? Well, I'm a, I'm a iffy.
Two and a half. Okay. How many people are available on the 13th? Three. I'm not doing very well. How many people were? I'm not doing very well. How many people were available on the twentieth? Three. Well. It's a little award. And is three enough, or do we want to try to get different times? Do we want to push it out further into October? Three was our top, yeah.
Twenty-nine was two and a half.
Was two and a half. If you can get Marnie to flip over, we can do the twenty-ninth.
No, well, I'm just saying probably better.
So then, let's see, wait, what is the twenty-ninth?
The next available Wednesday I would have after that would be in December fifteenth.
Holy moly.
I would have to check and see if there's.
Yeah.
Thirteen's the only one. That's a, that's always a big meeting day. Second Wednesday is always a big meeting day. Why there's no school board meetings on Wednesdays anymore.
Right. Make sure nothing's going on at IMS.
Yeah, no, no, no. Well, it doesn't sound, it doesn't sound like we're going to do any better if we push it off. Um. Again, I would vote thirteen. So the thirteen.
Who can do the twenty-ninth?
Sydney, Harlan, and maybe Marnie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can move something through the twenty-ninth.
All right, you want to do it the twenty-ninth? I can't do it, but.
Yeah, so then I would really push it. I would probably just leave right at like nine fifteen.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
As long as I knew beforehand.
So I'm in another state, so I will have to miss that one, but um, we will do it.
What, what was the date landed on?
Nine twenty-nine.
And you want to.
The first one.
Check IMS availability for that. And it should be.
And now, do you have a list of guiding questions on this, or?
I think we'll just stick with the same template that we use.
Same ones.
To be consistent, would be my recommendation.
Okay, so um, board elementary listening sessions, three or four in the different regions. Four thirty to five thirty, any day the board is available.
I have to be, I'm pretty, I'm tapped out on September.
Okay.
So, I was like, what, what month, any date?
Um, it sounds like any date the board is available means we can just pick one or four.
And this was around what?
Elementary listening sessions.
Because, right.
Is this staff, or is this?
Yeah, because we, the point was, remember, it was supposed to be like pre-COVID, we were going to do our, our feeder pattern secondary listening sessions. Some of them have a linkage with IEA leadership on what we all heard. And then.
The next year.
The next year, we would do our elementary listening sessions.
Okay.
But we're like two plus years behind.
So is this something that we could look at doing in, during the winter?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think, I mean, it doesn't need to necessarily, there's no timing, but that, that was the one.
Okay, well, or do we want to like do some kind of a doodle or something on this? Because having us all just throw dates out is going to be painful. And Harlan, you know, Harlan and Sydney are generally the hardest ones to schedule. I'm going to say particularly at a four thirty time. Um, so maybe one or both of you could throw out some potential dates for Diane, and then we could doodle from there. And based on the last doodle that we did for the appeal, we've discovered that um, the program sometimes changes the time zone that you're in, which is why I thought it wasn't available. Because it was giving me, the, the, on one computer, it said three to six, and the other computer said six to nine. Because they were in two different time zones.
Like why I thought that the ribbon cutting was at NAM, because when I took the calendar invite, it was, I was in central time zone. And so it seemed like a normal time, so I never even thought of it, because it would have been the other way, and it was six AM, I'd been like, what?
Yeah.
So I didn't even pick it up, so.
Because I thought it was very confused, why all of our things for the appeal were like noon to ten PM. Well, really, because that's what it looked like to me, but it was really nine, like seven.
And at the top of the doodle, it'll.
Got to look at that.
Tell you which time zone you're, you're looking at.
No.
No, well.
Yes, it depends on your device.
Yeah, it, it, it wasn't your fault. It was just bizarre. Um, so anyway, that was a, a bird walk. So if you can throw out some dates to Diane.
What are we thinking, January, November, where?
It's going to take us a long time. I would like to get them done before we start our uh, SIPs.
Oh yeah, those are on here too.
Oh, they start at the beginning of February, end of January, beginning of February.
Dates on here, these are all.
Oh, there's dates?
Yeah.
Yeah. The bottom.
Six, six are on here. Oh, they are all March.
So unfortunately, let's see, I think that it got one choice is on the front page and the other choice of dates are on the second page. If you flip it over, you'll see the second.
March, but they're still all March.
They're, yeah, they're, they're the same week, just one day apart.
Oh, March is going to be busy.
That's just, those are suggestions though, obviously. We just try to, we try to give you some things to start your discussion with.
Was, was there a reason we're not starting in February? Because I thought we did like.
It, I worked with Rich and he was um, looking at.
Hopefully they'll have testing data.
Yeah, it might, it might have something to do with that. I mean, I know, well, there would be eye ready testing. I, I don't, you know, we're going to have.
Isn't S-PAC this fall?
S-PAC. Yeah, we're doing an S-PAC um, in the fall. Um, and we will certainly have that data.
Yes.
We don't have a lot of confidence in that data. We think that we'll have to see what the, we'll have, be able to compare it to the spring. There's some problems in my mind with, um, one, it's still a norm, a spring norm test, is my understanding, that we're going to administer in the fall. So we'll see.
I mean, I thought they were going to administer in the fall for the grade before. They're not doing that?
Uh, you know, Harlan, that you, that may be, that may be right. I, I know I've been involved in some conversations.
So it should be what we've covered.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if that's the case, yeah, that would.
Because they're doing a spring test too.
Yes, we're doing two administrations.
Right, that's why I thought it was the previous year.
Yeah.
The fourth graders would take the third grade.
That, that may have even, that may have even played into Rich's suggestion of these dates.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah.
So I'm going to go with January.
Yeah, so let's plan for them between January and um, midwinter break.
January, October, okay.
So if you find four dates in January, February, the, for those six week period, I can hopefully work two of them.
Um, yeah, or come up with a few more if you did to see, to get all of us to try to hit those dates.
Yeah. Um, now I'm going to assume that this cabinet member availability for people who want to meet with the new cabinet members, that's not really something we have to do here so much as we could maybe coordinate that through you.
Totally, yes.
Perfect. Um, I will let the people with hard to schedule times do it.
And mine will not be September.
Okay, so we'll let those go. So um, on the SIP date, what time of day are the SIPs?
We've been doing them in the afternoon.
Like twelve thirty to four, yeah.
Okay, I can do either one. I might be late to the March first one.
So.
But I won't be.
You won't be present, don't worry about it. Well, maybe, you don't know. We could reward you with.
Funny, funny math. You want me to leave now? So, okay, does anybody have a preference on these?
Can I ask a question? Does there any expectation we'll actually go to NSBA this year? I mean, is it really going to happen? Because it's right before.
NSBA will go broke if they do not get butts in seats.
Right, and so the, the issue with the, both of these sets of dates have the thirtieth and thirty-first, which butt right up against NSBA. It's April.
Second to fourth.
Yeah, they have early bird on the first. I don't know when Marnie has to be there, because.
I'd have to be there before and I don't have that.
She probably can't do the thirtieth and thirty-first.
Oh, I think that they will run it. I think, like I said, I really think that by mid-January, we'll start to see, it start to recede, and then by mid-March, I think we'll be.
NSBA grossed a million dollars from the last, from the co, from the last one.
Okay, but I.
They cannot survive on that one. It is, it's like a quarter of their budget, and typically around four million dollars, so.
So I think what I'm hearing is that both of these options have the thirtieth and the thirty-first, and that may be problematic for the board.
So we might need to push, push out to a.
Yeah, either earlier or later, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the thirtieth and thirty-first are ultimately going to become a problem.
Okay, now there's a big gap. Is there a break in here that I'm not?
Not in March.
Not in March. Why do we have such a gap between meeting one and meeting?
And why did we, why did we do one on Tuesday and then the other some Wednesday, or Wednesday and then Thursday?
There may be method to his madness, I just don't.
Yeah, Rich was just looking at his, at his uh, teaching and learning calendar.
Um, yeah, I get, and I guess the thirty-first is problematic and the thirty.
Yeah.
I mean, we can always move things around the desire of the board as well, I mean.
I mean, it doesn't have to be every other week in March. I mean, I could ask if it could be like, you know.
Well, maybe, yeah, check back with them and see if.
NSBA meeting?
That's what it was.
Oh, not.
Date again?
Oh, not be on a board meeting.
Meeting Thursdays.
Oh.
So that you don't have to have a, you know, Tuesday and a Thursday.
I see.
Or a, a Thursday that goes from noon all the way until ten thirty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's just that third one is going to be problematic.
I, 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 will it though? Would the second dates be problematic if we did the thirtieth? And that's.
The thirtieth might be okay.
I don't know. I don't know when Marnie has to go.
But I mean, I, I think we should tentatively calendar it.
Okay.
And then we can always change it as soon as Marnie lets us know when she has to fly out.
So are we saying that we like the second choice then?
Well, I don't care about the choices as much as just not the thirty-first.
Well, but that moves us to the second choice.
Well, I mean, you could mix.
Oh, you could just make.
You could mix and match.
Match.
Is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't, as I said, the only one I have an issue with is March first, and it's not a very big issue. I could probably be here within a half hour after you start, so.
Or could we?
Yeah.
Do, well, if, also, we could, if you could do March second, I don't know why.
We could just do all Wednesdays.
Why wouldn't, couldn't we do all Wednesday, March, because it's on the first list?
Yeah.
If you did Wednesday, March second, and then Wednesday, the sixteenth, and then the thirtieth.
Is that okay, Diane?
Wednesday, March second.
And then, and then keep the sixteenth and the thirtieth.
Yes, that's fine.
I think he was just trying to accommodate our Thursday schedule. I think he was trying to actually help us.
That's what he was, that's exactly what he was doing.
And, and you know, this, in the, and in the end, this is so far out.
Yeah, this is the time to do it for me. I'm like, yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, well, I still, I mean, I'll try my best.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you have an issue with?
No, not yet.
Oh, not yet.
I, I, I can't guarantee I can give up every week in March to be at a board event.
Well.
I'm, I'm trying to stay married.
Not going to get involved in that. Okay, um, this is starting to get, I told you, calendar this would take forever. Um. What?
Yes.
Twelve thirty to four.
Well, Diane will send us out a.
Oh, but his, no, but he's got to get it on his calendar.
Okay, yeah, 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 never mind. Sorry, I, I stand corrected. Okay, um, the inter-district, inter-district student council meeting, that's Marnie and me. That's before the board meeting on Tuesday.
I was just wondering if we could actually formally calendar this meeting.
Oh.
All right.
Sure.
I moved the board holds school improvement plan meetings on Wednesday, March second, Wednesday, March sixteenth, and Wednesday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, from twelve thirty to four at the admin building.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consider it calendared.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I gotta be looking in both directions. I keep messing this up. Okay, Marnie and I are going to do the student council meeting uh, prior to the next board meeting, which by the way, is on Tuesday, not on Thursday, so. Um, which is why Marnie and I and Ron are agenda planning tomorrow morning in just hours from now, so that you can get the agenda on the fifteenth, and it will be published to the public on Friday. Because otherwise, we're not legal for a Tuesday meeting. Um, and then Anne's going to miss that meeting. She has my permission. Um, okay, no, I'm just, I'm sorry, it's late, it's.
Technically, for it to not be an unexcused absence, and after four consecutive unexcused absence, you're vacated from your office.
Yeah, it's, we're fine. Um, she would never do that. Okay, October sixth, there's a regional meeting, regional WASDA meeting in Renton. Sydney has a candidate forum.
I do too, but it's virtual, and so if the WASDA regional meeting is going to be hybrid, I can attend for like the first half hour.
Well, for sure it's hybrid.
Yeah.
So.
No, it is high sensitive, I should have said, sensitive.
Ron, Ron.
Oh, wait, Sydney?
Okay, so Ron, Suzanne, and Anne will attend in person. I assume Harlan's in person because he's running it. And Marnie and Sydney have a candidate forum, which is important. I'm sorry, I'll miss it. Okay, we have a board retreat scheduled on Monday and Tuesday, October eleventh and twelve. Um. If you have, I have a couple of items for the agenda already. Um, we don't have to, if you have something burning, give it to me now, otherwise, um, just email me with thoughts about things you might want on the agenda. I sense nothing is burning, okay. And, gosh, registration for NSBA starts on October twenty-first, San Diego, April second through the fourth. That's, oh no, October, that's not, that's not this.
You already announced that WASDA is going to be a hybrid for annual conference.
No, I didn't talk about that. WASDA will be hybrid. Oh, I think we, we talked about it. Before our exec session, for those of us that got to be here at three PM.
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah.
It may have been dinner conversation.
Oh, the district getting their money's worth tonight.
Okay, um, that's that. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
You know, I had a question for the good of the order, and it, and I realize I probably will have to hear it from Donna, and she'll get back to us later, but I just remembered. Um, so if we were to seek to get our stipend for meetings, do we have to then now show her our
Yes.
Thing instead of, okay.
Right, the district, you don't.
Okay.
I needed to.
All four of you, well, we have all five of you on, because four of you did it at the clinic, and that, we had all of that, and Suzanne already gave.
Because I am feeling exhausted and I might actually fill out some paperwork.
Oh. Oh, okay.
I was told that the board has all been.
verified.
Oh, yeah, you were really early because you're a doctor.
Right, and I'll go back to the um, WASDA annual conference. For anybody that is finding they're not going to go in person, they really want you to switch. If you're, if you're going to go virtual, switch, because they have a eight hundred person capacity limit for in the building, in their building. So just, if somebody believes that they can't be there.
And they've reached capacity.
And they've reached capacity, and then if anybody signed up for the pre-conference, that is only in person. It's not virtual.
Now, we've already signed up for this.
We did.
Yes.
We are signed up in person, but if, I'm just saying, if anybody looks at it and says, well, I'm not going to go because I have other conflicts that they're kind of scheduling it in between, go ahead and they can change the registration from in person to virtual. It opens up a spot for somebody else.
Yeah.
But we'll still be doing an in-person board night out.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. That's right.
Okay. Anything else? I for one am calendared out.